Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Coeur d'Alene for June 4 of 2024. Will the clerk note that all council are present? And we'll begin this evening by an invocation by Kevin Bidnoff of the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter Day Saints. Kevin, welcome.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to gather here as friends and neighbors, community members, elected officials. We're grateful for the rain that has blessed our lands with these last few days. We're grateful to gather here this evening. In this special time of year, we ask for Thy guidance to be with us and we ask for peace and love and community to be, and the energy of friendship to be in this room this evening. Help our minds to be, and our hearts to be filled with friendship, but also collaboration for this great city that we live in. We're grateful for our freedoms in our country. We ask a special blessing upon the youth of this community. They may be filled with passion and especially our graduating seniors. We are grateful for our military men and women and our first responders and we ask a blessing to be upon them as well. And we give Thee our thanks and ask these blessings to be upon us this evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. If you'll join us in the pledge and Councilman, what is going to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're not done, Dan. You have to, you don't get to leave already.
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna get some water.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
English just took off too.
I'm having trouble with the "Dan's" tonight. Dan-Dans.
I could hear you.
Okay, we're then going to begin with a hearing and our city attorney, Randy Adams, will lead this off. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. For the convenience of the City Council, the appellant, the applicant and other interested parties, I'm going to outline the appeal process as mandated by the City Code. The applicant will have 10 minutes to present, or the appellant, I'm sorry, will have 10 minutes to present her case, followed by the applicant who will also have 10 minutes. Public comment will follow, with each speaker being allowed up to three minutes. The applicant will have an opportunity then to address public comment and finally, the appellant will have up to five minutes to offer rebuttal. Staff, of course, is present and available at any time should council have any questions. The project is located here on the corner of Sixth Street and Sherman Avenue. I just wanted to point out at the outset that there's been some talk about a pedestrian-oriented street, but by code, the pedestrian-oriented street on Sherman ends at Sixth Street. From Sixth Street East, it's a vehicle-oriented street. This is an aerial view of the property looking south. So the appeal concerns a decision of the city's Design Review Commission. Essentially, the DRC determines whether a project meets the design guidelines which were established by the City Council and are contained in the design, commercial, or downtown design guidelines. The guidelines deal with very specific issues, most of which are not involved in this appeal. This kind of summarizes the criteria of the Design Review Commission that are actually at issue tonight. The design review process is intentionally-
Andy, can you go back to that last one? Can you explain why so many of those are marked out?
Because those were not raised by the appellant as issues. They weren't, some of them are just not applicable to this project. For example, the parking, because it's underground parking and you don't need landscaped trees for underground parking. So this just narrows down the issues that were really pertinent to the Design Review Commission's decision and the appeal tonight.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, essentially, the Design Review Commission determines whether a project meets the design guidelines established by code. The design review process is intentionally narrow. The Design Review Commission did not and cannot address basic zoning questions, floor area ratios, building height, density, and what uses are permitted in any given zone. The Commission also cannot consider the nature of the development in general, its height, development intensity, parking, and traffic impacts. These are matters that are instead addressed by various city departments, especially the planning, the building, and the streets department, as the building plans are submitted and the development proceeds. In short, the Design Review Commission only determines, in its collective judgment, how well a proposed project comports with the design guidelines adopted by council.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask questions as he goes along?
Do you mind if we ask questions while you go along?
I don't know.
Thank you, just because we'll get too far down the road. If you would just back up to the last slide, and that verbiage, the very last paragraph, talks about the Commission has discretion to reconcile adopted standards and guidelines with site-specific conditions in order to meet the intent of the zoning code. Can you give an example of what that discretion would be?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know if Hillary is here. Do you have an example? Call on our planning director.
Well, one of the examples for this particular project where it was adopted or approved with conditions was the weather protection. And so, you know, looking at kind of the height of the awning and how that worked, is that going to work with a condition, same as their pedestrian-oriented street and some of the condition, the condition that was applied to that, with a condition they can say, yes, we're exercising our collective judgment and saying it comports with the adopted design guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But it still has to relate to what the Design Review Commission can actually look The unappeal, council must base its decision on the record that was created before the Design Review Commission. In other words, no new evidence, no new facts can be brought forward and considered by council. All of the information that was presented to the Design Review Commission is in the council packet, and this is by code. That council cannot accept new evidence at this stage of the process, whether it is in the form of a document or testimony. Any comments or argument tonight therefore should be based on the record and only on the matters that are pertinent to the Design Review Commission's determination. Things that the Design Review Commission cannot or could not deal with, could not consider, could not alter are not part of the appeal tonight. So the appellant, again by code, has the burden of proof, and the burden of proof is by a preponderance of the evidence. That means on any particular fact that she believes was in error, she has to show that that fact is more likely true than not true. She has to show that the Design Review Commission committed an error, either in a factual determination that was not supported by the evidence, or in a legal error of applying some condition that wasn't allowed by code. So the appellant has raised several issues in her appeal. As I noted, some of those don't fall within the scope of the Commission's authority. For example, traffic studies, the Design Review Commission can't address traffic. That's something that's addressed by the code, will be addressed by the departments when final building plans are submitted and the departments look at what it is and what effect it has. Now, a traffic review study has been done, but it was not considered by the Commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Well, you skipped ahead of some of the slides. I assume that that's because you just kind of-
It kind of changed a little bit. The slides that you have in your packet were based on what was in the record the last time we appeared. The appellant has changed her presentation somewhat and I was unable to get mine changed to match that. So we deleted some slides that basically referred to some of her issues, but apparently are not being pressed forward tonight.
Okay, well, just two questions then. The parking study is not being considered, but you said it was done.
The traffic study, yes.
Traffic, thank you. That's not part of our packet. We've never seen that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then slide, you don't have the slide up there, but I had a question about inadequate or missing information in the application. Photos of the view corridor, I just want to, and you won't be able to answer this, Hillary's going to have to. I just want to know where the view corridor is addressed in the Design Review Committee report?
It's not, and it's not in the design guidelines either.
The view corridor isn't considered part of the massing?
It would be, yes. If the building were tall enough, then it would be held or accounted for by the massing guideline.
Okay, thank you.
But that does not apply because the building is not tall enough.
Okay, thank you.
So council has the duty to affirm or reverse the Commission decision, or it may refer the matter back to the Commission if further action or clarification is needed. So I'll stand for any further questions-
Kiki?
I just-
On the process.
Randy, I just want to be clear then. Those options really are our only decision point tonight. The fact that there's going to be a hotel here is not a decision point. It's just whether the appeal is just clearly about the Design Review's job, whether we believe they did it or they didn't based on these facts.
That is correct. This particular zone allows a hotel as a matter of right.
Thank you. And the other thing I wanted to just double check on is that we are supposed to consider just the evidence presented here, but we received a whole new pile of emails. So how are we supposed to view that?
The emails could be considered argument. Again, they would have to address facts that were presented to the Design Review Commission and would have to pertain only to those areas that the Commission is authorized to address.
Got it.
Anything else, we're relying on council to ignore because it's not proper.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person that would come up, or the first person, I guess, is the person that has provided the concern. Thank you.
Be me.
I lost my chi chi.
There.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Hammond and members of the City Council. My name's Joan Woodard and I reside at 609 East Sherman, directly across the street from this proposed project. I filed this appeal because I believe that there were errors by the city staff that enabled the application to proceed and shortcomings in the Design Review deliberations. I cannot address everything in the short time provided for my presentation this evening, so I'm going to focus on some of the more serious ones. I'd like to make it clear that I am not opposed to a hotel on this site, as I do believe a hotel could represent the highest and best use of this property. With regard to my assertion that there was a lack of public notice, an opportunity to be heard, I have two points. The first is that the information for the Design Review meeting was not posted for public review until the 22nd of January, and the hearing was held on the 25th. We did have noticed prior to that that it was going to be held, but we didn't know what it was about or what it was going to look like. This was a very short period for the public or even the Design Review Commission to be able to digest this complex application. This is a shortcoming in the system as no deadlines are stated for making information available in the municipal code. The second point regarding public notice is that according to a document on the city's website, which I have described before and titled "Design Review Process, Coeur d'Alene", it proposes a very different structure for Design Review meetings. It contemplates that there would be three meetings and perhaps four for each Design Review meeting, not one, and then there would be requisite notices for each. I know that presents a conflict with Code Section 17.09.325, but it is what the public saw as public information and could have reasonably expected to count on for this project. I also note that sometime in the last two weeks, this document has been removed from the city's website. In addition, I believe there are serious shortcomings in the language of Article 6 entitled "Design Review Procedures," specifically the use of the defined term "initial meeting." It is used to alternately describe a meeting with planning staff, and then it's also used to describe a meeting with Design Review. It can't be both. It creates confusion and a procedure that simply doesn't work, and that's what we see here. So while the city attorney says that the requirements have been met, I don't believe the spirit and intent for citizen awareness and participation in a very major project have been met, and that alone should be enough to send this project back to Design Review. The next failure is the lack of a traffic study prior to scheduling Design Review and allowing the plan to proceed with Sherman Avenue and alley access. City staff says the access for the property and traffic problems are not part of the criteria for Design Review. I disagree. I contend that by making a traffic study a condition of the approval of the Design Review Commission, which they did, it becomes part of the purview of Design Review. Also, Municipal Code 17.09.325 in the opening statement of purpose regarding submittals for Design Review states, "Before substantive design decisions are fixed and difficult or expensive to alter, the applicant must be willing to consider options for the project's basic form, orientation, massing, relationship to existing sites and structures, surrounding streets and sidewalks, and appearance from a distance." This statement of purpose was ignored by Design Review. Per the city engineer, while a traffic study is indeed a condition of the Design Review approval, it is not required prior to issuance of a building permit and commencement of construction. This defies logic and reason. By definition, a traffic study includes an analysis of the design elements of a proposed project. For instance, it will provide guidance on the best driveway entry and exit locations for the building that will minimize traffic impact to surrounding areas. Other elements include turning movements, traffic controls, and facility geometry, addressing different patterns for visitor automobiles, delivery vehicles, visitor drop-off and pickup, et cetera. Many times, the information from a traffic study will necessitate a change in the design of the project to mitigate these impacts. The city engineer will also tell you that he couldn't require the applicant to prepare the traffic study before finalizing the application for Design Review because they needed to treat this application similarly to the Thomas George, another high-density development. However, while these are both high-density developments, they are entirely different. A high-rise residential building with about 60 units, a coffee shop, and parking has completely different traffic, parking utilization, circulation, and pedestrian impacts than a hotel of 130 rooms with over 230 restaurant or bar seats and hotel staff of 30 to 50 people. Local governments typically require a traffic impact study when a new development is expected to generate 100 or more new trips in the peak hour, once it is fully constructed and open. Based on the Traffic Engineering Handbook, a hotel of this size will generate over 1,000 new trips per day. Municipal Code 10.02.010 states, "The city finds that parking, movement, and control of traffic on the public rights of way should be regulated to promote traffic safety, to enhance the smooth flow of traffic, and to fairly allocate parking spaces among the public." It goes on to say that "regulation is required to meet the objectives of this title and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of drivers and pedestrians using public rights of way. It seems to me that taking such a hands-off approach to the impacts of traffic is in direct violation of City Code by the city engineer. The use of Sherman Avenue is not appropriate for many reasons, and I believe a proper traffic, circulation, and pedestrian study would have supported this contention and consequently require a significant revision to the design of the hotel." In addition to the points on this slide, I'd add that I've been told by people who should know that it was a decision point many years ago that there would be no additional curb cuts on Sherman Downtown, other than those grandfathered for Idaho Trust and First Interstate Bank. During peak periods, traffic will be backing up on Sherman when there is no parking available in the hotel, a situation that occurs regularly at the resort, but at least they have their own private driveway for stacking of vehicles. Utilizing the alley as a secondary entrance and exit is also fraught with problems, as this is a highly utilized alley for city services, delivery vehicles for the commercial businesses, and residences at Parkside. Vehicles trying to enter or exit the hotel through the alley will be unable to many times during a normal day. The alley is also too narrow for most vehicles to execute a left- or right-hand turn out of the proposed hotel. My deck overlooks this property. I watch traffic and movement all day long. I know what goes on here, and this is going to be a problem. Staff will tell you that they couldn't suggest moving the hotel entrance and exit to Sixth Street because the design guidelines for downtown say that Sixth Street is a pedestrian street. But approvals have been granted for many exits and entrances on pedestrian streets. For example, Parkside entrances are both on pedestrian streets. The next major shortcoming of this project is the lack of any attempt to try and comply with the city's comprehensive plan. As you know, our comprehensive plan was updated in 2022, and by Idaho Code, City Code, and the Development Regulations for the Downtown Core, an evaluation of how well the proposed project addresses the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan is a requirement. I've put on the screen a few of those goals and objectives and highlighted those that specifically relate to the shortcomings in this application. The first of the goals of the comprehensive plan was to make sure that citizens are well-informed, responsive, and involved in community discussions. Back to my earlier point about the document on the website which described a different process for Design Review that would have enabled more input to Design Review decision, that would have satisfied this point. With the adoption of the comprehensive plan, action items were also established. These items were all supposed to be addressed in the first five years of the comprehensive plan. Please notice how important view corridors, preservation of character, shadows, light pollution, but most importantly, views are to this city. Municipal Code 17.01.015 states that "The purposes of zoning ordinance is that the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance together make up part of the land use control system for the city of Coeur d'Alene. Zoning conforms and implements today's needs with the goals and objectives of the future as expressed in the comprehensive plan. It's clear to me that our municipal code requires that an applicant give clear and specific attention to the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan when deciding on the attributes of their project and presenting it for approval. The only nod this applicant gave to this was that their rooftop bar and lounge would be taking advantage of views. Lovely, what about all the views the project will obliterate for taxpayers in the city?" The next slide provides some details on information not provided by the applicant that relate to the comprehensive plan. There were no details on views, other than their own, shade and shadows, project massing in context with surrounding properties, impact of lighting and noise from the rooftop bar, historical contacts for setbacks.
Excuse me, Joan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can you have them turn on the lights?
Lights?
Our lights?
Yeah, because I'm trying to take notes and I can't see. Thank you.
But now we can, okay. This is a photo from the middle-
Halfway up.
No, it's the overhead lights. These lights are off, and normally they have these lights on, and I can't see when I'm writing because we're in the dark, which says a lot.
And on another, how are we-
I think of the ability for me to turn those on and off away from me, so I have no control. It's either visual or bad.
We can't turn the lights on. This is government.
And as far as the timer? 10 minutes.
Oh, I wasn't informed of that, so.
That's why I was wondering how we are for time. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a switch?
All right, you've got lights. Sorry to interrupt you, Joan.
That's okay.
Please proceed.
This is a slide from the middle of the 609 East Sherman Building, and this hotel, and they did not show any drawings that would reflect this, will cover the entire area that's covered in snow and go up to about this height, go across, and down. And so you can see that I will no longer have views of Tubbs Hill, distant landforms, or the lake, or any of my neighbors. This slide is from the perspective of a vehicle or a pedestrian on Sherman. You can quickly see how the proposed building will also change the character of the city for everyone with regard to view corridors. There are several instances where the application omitted information on the site plan and staff didn't intercede. The applicant failed to present information regarding street trees and street lighting on Sixth Street. They failed to indicate that the Sixth Street sidewalk abutting this property is an inferior seven feet and according to standards must be a minimum of 12 to 15 feet when providing the required street trees, street lighting, and pedestrian amenities. Code provides that a project may have to use their private property to address sidewalk requirements. At this time, I believe they intend to encroach on Sixth Street to satisfy this requirement, which shouldn't be allowed without acknowledging that there are impacts to traffic and parking on Sixth Street, and that needs to be addressed. Finally, there are scale and massing issues that are supposed to be part of Design Review. They relate to context and information was omitted upon which the Commission should have been briefed. This photograph provides a contextual evidence for the neighboring property on Sherman, the historic Masonic Building. As you can see, this building, except for their stairway entrance, which is a minor part of their frontage, is set back from the curb by 20 feet. The Idaho Trust Building further up on Sherman at Seventh Street intersection is set back more than 20 feet. Now, if you can imagine, the Marriott that's been proposed, they intend to build right to the edge of their property line, so where you see the grass here, you would have a building going up 75 feet. That will close in an otherwise open part of Sherman, or where Sherman starts to open up as it goes eastward. The setbacks on the other side of the street from the proposed hotel are also varied. So the applicant was required to present drawings that put their project footprint in context with the building footprints of parcels within 300 feet. This was omitted from their submission. Staff and Design Review Commission were also provided at least two statements of fact by the applicant that are false. One is that they don't need to consider parking for the restaurant, bar, lounge uses as they are under 3,000 square feet, which is the hurdle size in the guidelines. Nobody challenged this assertion, which is, in fact- Nobody challenged this assertion, which is, in fact, in error. It's at least six thousand square feet, and it does create a significant impact. The applicant also attested to the fact that the rooftop bar lounge would be at the same elevation and next to Sweet Lou's, the restaurant in the Parkside condominium building. And these are in the minutes of the design review meeting. This was also completely unfactual, as Sweet Lou's is on the first floor of Parkside, facing south, and the proposed bar lounge is on the sixth floor of the hotel and not adjacent in any way. What amazes me is that...
Are you almost...
Almost.
Okay.
Is that staff and design review don't know the existing conditions of the surrounding land uses well enough to have realized this was simply not a truthful statement by the applicant, and yet we are relying on them to preserve and protect this city from making planning and design mistakes. In summary, it appears to me that city staff and the applicant were attempting to submit an expedient proposal suggesting no variations of significance to the design guidelines and expecting little public input or time to address public concerns. We are at the point in this city's evolution where we should be striving for the best possible solutions for each new project, not an expedient one that misses big issues, like making a permanent mistake on Sherman Avenue. This application first and foremost needs a thorough traffic study before being brought back to design review, compliance with the comprehensive plan, and more rigorous attention to existing site constraints and details. I have been prejudiced by the errors made by staff and design review in the approval of this project. My views of Tubbs Hill and the lake will be obliterated when they should have been protected by virtue of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I have been prejudiced by not being given an opportunity to be heard and my concerns addressed before substantive decisions were cast in concrete, and the design review approval was a rubber stamp without consideration of facts and circumstances specific to this site as required by code. I live here year-round, so I know what happens on Sherman regarding traffic, snow removal, exhaust fumes, parking, noise, light intrusion, and so forth, and the importance of proper ingress and egress for hundreds of cars is a concern of mine. It concerns my property values and those of all my neighbors. It also should concern the city when more and more residents stop coming downtown to shop and eat because it's too hard to get around or find a place to park. All these things can and should be addressed and resolved. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And now we... Applause is not ever appropriate at a council meeting. This is a legislative body, and we need to maintain order in such circumstances. Now I would ask the applicant, and they will also have ten minutes, Jeff.
So I'm trying to figure out how to work this. One over to the right?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor Hammond, members of the council. My name's Parker Lang. Here tonight, I really just want to say, you know, I think we brought forward a really great application, something that we're really proud of, and we believe that we've met all the design guidelines. Staff believes we've met all the design guidelines, and we got a unanimous approval from the DRC. One thing I did want to touch on is just a brief overview of kind of the timeline of how we got to here today. So we initially submitted in August first of last year. We received that unanimous approval from the Design Review Commission in January of this year, and we're here for you tonight in June. You know, that's really caused some significant delays for our project, and again, we meet all the design guidelines. This is a code-compliant proposed project, so these delays have really caused some significant hardship to us. One other item I'd just like to talk about is the ordinance that was amended for tonight. I just wanted to highlight there is no new evidence or materials shall be allowed by any party in the appeals proceedings. Again, the twenty-two design guidelines are up for discussion tonight. We believe that we met them. I do have my architect and engineer here with me tonight in support to answer any technical questions that may come up. And I just wanted to also highlight an excerpt from the code. This is in the Design Core from the municipal code. You know, encourage private and public investment, attract shoppers and visitors, and appeal to existing and new residents, produce a concentration and a mixture of commercial, office, retail, residential, and public uses within the downtown. And then application, this district is envisioned of the highest intensity of uses, especially retail, office, residences, hotels, contained within low-rise. And the last one, the core is really surrounded around Sherman Avenue. And again, I'll just breeze over a few of these items. I feel like Randy addressed that item. Inadequate and missing information. I do have several slides that presented to the DRC that have not been altered at all, just to provide some neighborhood context. We are adjacent to an eighteen-story building to the south of us, and the six-story building to the north. I feel like the neighborhood context is appropriate for this project. We are six stories, so well within that. And I'd also like to highlight that downtown core design guidelines do allow two hundred and twenty feet tall by right here. We're proposing seventy-five. So again, this is all in your packet, so I'll just breeze over this, but this is what was provided to staff and the DRC in making their decision. This information is all in your packet. Traffic has been touched on, and I won't go into that. Ground-level details, again, we believe that we've met all the design requirements. The DRC believes so as well. I do have architect here to address any items that may come up if you have specific questions on, but I'll go ahead and breeze through some of my limited time here. I'll just touch on the historic features. This was brought up in the letter, street trees and streetlight cadence. You know, we are removing all the existing trees along Sherman and replacing them in the exact same location, and the streetlights are going to have the exact same cadence. There is a driveway location that needs to shift for access to the property. That pole will simply be removed and relocated twenty feet on the exact same cadence that exists today. This information, again, is in your packet. It was also part of the DRC. And then with concerns, there was a provision in the approval made by engineering about Sixth Street. I'll just say, without providing new information, you know, we've worked through that issue, and we've addressed any concerns on Sixth Street, so. And again, what I'd ask for tonight is to affirm the decision that was ultimately unanimously made by the Design Review Commission, and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Are either one of you coming up now? Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next thing we need to do is to, for those who actually are going to speak, and it looks like very few of you have asked to speak, you need to take an oath, and our clerk will swear you in. So if you would, those of you who intend to speak, would you please stand up? And will you administer the oath, please?
Please raise your right hand and respond by saying, "I affirm." Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, I will open the public hearing. I want to remind you, this hearing is not about whether this hotel will be built or not. That is not the question. The only question before this council is if there are some concerns that the Design Review Commission did not properly review or... Not sure the right word, but didn't examine correctly or didn't guide correctly. Brian Klein is in favor but does not wish to speak. S. Gray is in favor, did not wish to speak. James Gerardo is opposed, does not wish to speak. Patrice Dane is opposed, does not wish to speak. Nikki Mebias is opposed, does not wish to speak. Linda Larson King is opposed, does not wish to speak. Diana Sheridan is opposed, did not wish to speak. Camilla Lathrop is opposed, does not wish to speak. Fred McLaren did not express anything opposed or...
I filled out the paper over here.
I'm sorry?
I filled out the paper over here. I would like to speak.
Well, then please come forward.
I think your packets contain a copy of my statement and a copy of the attachments to my statement, and I'll refer to them as I go through this. It's rather brief.
I need to remind you, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, that you have three minutes, so.
Thank you. The purpose of this statement is to support the appeal that's been issued, and I'm opposed to the project as proposed. Why am I here? I live in apartment number six oh one at six oh one in the Parkside Apartments, right opposite the proposed project. My bedroom windows face directly north. If the hotel is built, my bedroom windows will look directly into the sixth-floor wall of the hotel about twenty-five feet away. My dining room windows also face directly north. These windows will be one hundred percent covered by the hotel. My current view of the downtown corridor area and background mountains and sky would be blocked, replaced by the hotel wall twenty-five feet away. My outside patio on northwest corner of my condo would then focus on the sixth-floor restaurant, and my comment here is two hundred people, I don't know how many people are supposed to be in there. Will focus directly on the sixth-floor restaurant and the rooftop bar of the hotel with its lights and noise twenty-five feet away, that spot from me to you. Facing west from my patio, I would be looking along the top floor of the hotel outside wall, blocking my view to the north. From the family room area, my view to the west would be partially blocked. My view to the southwest, looking at the lake, would not be greatly impaired, as you've seen from the several slides that have been put up here. It's pretty clear that the north side, Parkside Apartments, for several stories, would be It's my belief that the hotel is built as proposed, the value of the fifty-three condominium units in Parkside would be significantly reduced, significantly reduced. No one wants to live in a condo with a wall outside, due to the noise, loss of view corridors, and other impacts. Although I cannot speak for the other condo owners, there are at least six units that would be majorly adversely affected due to the close proximity of the structure. This issue is not even mentioned in the staff report, not even mentioned. In my inquiries as to why, I am confronted with the answer that these issues and many others are off limits, that this is a done deal. We are led to believe that the applicant has only to check the boxes within the mask. I'll skip a little bit here. Rest in history. Proximity to Parkside. I believe the proposed hotel does not comply with the published site performance standards, building bulk, tower separation requirements. That's published, and I have a copy of it here. That's this document here. It's distributed.
Three minutes is up, so if you...
At the Valley Way on Sixth Avenue, the building height is not seventy-five feet. It is more than eighty feet high. And I underline the phrase, "It is eighty feet above grade." That's the language used in your documents and in your guidelines. Since it's above seventy-five feet, by at least five feet, the sixth floor must be back fifty feet from our building.
Fred, your time is up.
I have other things here to say. I guess I'll just turn this in. Oh, you have it, right? Oh, it was the other paper. Okay.
The next person that signed the sheet, the first name is only a B, and then the last name begins with a P and an R, and I can't read the rest of it. They're with Idaho Trust Bank, and they are opposed. Mike Patano. When that alarm goes off, that is the end of your three minutes, so please adhere to
I'm the city council. I think tonight you've got as big a decision as this council's going to make, because this building is going to have a lasting impact on downtown Coeur d'Alene. I think that the points that Joan Woodard brought up are, I'm not going to go over those. I think there are lots of things, lots of unanswered questions, terms of traffic. I don't know how access from Sherman Avenue has gotten as far as it did, because this is the first time, I was on the Design Review Committee when we wrote the standards, and there were not going to be any access as granted off of Sherman Avenue. Somehow, that's changed. And the one that is shown, interestingly enough, goes through a turning lane. So when you talk about the fact that you can't pay attention to what's going on, the Design Review Committee, there are things that somebody should be picking up because they're fallen by the wayside. So I would challenge you to send this back to wherever it needs to go and start over again, and make sure that there is an adequate traffic study, that it pays attention to what's going on on Sherman Avenue, that you look at Sixth Street for a potential entrance/exit, that you do something on Sixth Street that takes part of the property away from the hotel, instead of trying to gobble up the street. They show loading zones, because there are none shown, and they look at the impact on neighbors, i.e. Idaho Trust. There's a retaining wall for parking there, and how is that going to magically go away? What happens to their parking during construction? And understand, during construction, part of Sherman Avenue is going to disappear, and so is the aisle, so is the alley. So there's lots of things that need to be answered. So, there's lots of things that need to be answered. This project pays no attention to the historic nature of the downtown area, the building next door, and we need to do that. You can't unring the bell. We need to take the time to ensure that this project is done right and addresses all these issues, as opposed to, as this gentleman talks to, we're losing time. Time is not important to making good decisions. The challenge right now is to do what's right for Coeur d'Alene and the people of Coeur d'Alene and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Sevwing. I've asked you to not applaud, please. Colin? Okay, we'll move on. He is opposed. Karen Anderson is opposed, does not wish to speak. Patty Echon is opposed, does not wish to speak. Eileen Kohler is opposed, does not wish to speak. Duncan Kohler is opposed, does not wish to speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. We do wish to speak.
Well, that would be helpful if they would check that. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing the public to speak towards this appeal. I would like to say that I'm not against growth, but I believe it should be thoughtfully considered. This plan has met many logistical issues, among other things. Here are a few. We have longstanding traditions of events and parades that run along and take place on Sherman. How will visitors access the entrance when Sherman Avenue is shut down for these events and parades? Or are we going to do away with these community events that are so endeared to the community? Included are Coeur d'Alene. This has been happening for over 25 years. Not only the parade, but the following two days, Sherman is lined with these classic cars all the way up to Seventh Avenue. The Street Fair, Art on the Green, 32 years. The Lighting Ceremony Parade, 33 years. July 4th Parade, since the 40s, I read. St. Patrick's Parade, 18 years. How will this work for guests checking in? It won't. Or are you considering the 16-foot alley to be the entrance and exit? The hotel's entrance exits are 24 feet wide, which is a maximum allowed, and this would work off of a normal road, but will not in and out of a narrow 16-foot alley. These are two-way entrance exits, which leaves 12 feet for each lane. Where I live, our garage is 18 feet wide, and for a mid-sized vehicle, it takes the whole width to maneuver into the alley. This will not work for a two-way opening. Also, the traffic flow of Parkside Alley is very busy, with numerous delivery trucks serving the businesses, restaurants, and residents of the Parkside Building. Some are frequently parked for over an hour. I can see this all day long. Will this work, how will this work for cars needing to enter and exit the hotel? It won't. Where are they going to stage the project? Coeur d'Alene's Comprehensive Plan 2022 to 2042, Part IV, Page 62, states that the downtown core area has specific guidelines and standards for the design of the new development. The guidelines are also intended to protect public views while preserving property values and character. Part III, Page 37, states objective GD 5.1 is to minimize glare, light trespass, and skiglow from outdoor lighting. How will this light, how will the lighting, not to mention noise levels, of the rooftop bar affect the property owners and property value directly across the alley 16 feet away? Also stated, the downtown core zone DC uses design guidelines to help guide development that ensures, to make certain, that means, that landscaping, which there's none, walkways, lighting setbacks, none, and building orientation and historic features, none, are considered when a new structure is proposed for an existing building or redeveloped.
That's your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you wish to speak also?
I do. Thank you, council members and mayor. My name's Duncan Kohler. I'm a resident across the street from this proposed project. I spent some time with the code because I wanted to understand how this project of this magnitude and importance to the city could get this far without public input. And it was hard to get through this code. It could use a rewrite. It was hard for me to understand, and I think for most citizens here in the city, they would be hard-pressed to understand, what is the procedure to get something built? They end up spending money on lawyers, that's for sure. That being said, what I think I learned was, there's a process, of course, and it starts with Article VI. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is a meeting between the applicant, and they bring in the different department staff members, and they talk about the project, and they figure what they need to do and maybe some things they can't do. And from that point, the next thing that happens is, under Article IV, it goes to the Design Review Committee. Okay? So, according to the timeline that the applicant put up, this first meeting at the Planning and Zoning Commission happened on August 1st. Now, according to Article VI, there's no public notice requirements there. So, we, the public, are depending on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city staff to represent our interests and protect our interests here. But there's no public notice. We're depending on them. One dicey issue I see here is that we have at least one Planning and Zoning Commission member who's a former director of Marriott's Interior Design, Ms. Fleming. So, we were depending on folks to represent our interests at that stage. But the next stage was designer review procedures. The first substantive provision in that code area, 17.09.315, is public notice. And it says, "Public notice shall be given three ways: mailed, in the press, and a sign posted." And there was no notice given. So, anything that the Design Review Committee has done after the fact is void, and this body has the authority, the inherent authority, to not let anything that has happened without the proper notice to have occurred. That's all void. It says "shall," and we all know statutory interpretation requires that these things happen, or anything that happens subsequently will not stand. That's what should happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. You feel like a school principal again.
Honorable mayor and city council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is John Wimpel. I stand before you in opposition of the Design Committee and Planning Approval of the Marriott Hotel on Sherman Avenue. I am also a resident of the downtown core. After hearing the steadfast position of a very obviously talented and experienced council, one who makes closing arguments upfront that we shouldn't even be here tonight, to be blunt, I'm certain litigation can follow, causing him to defend this position. Nothing is final. That's why we have the courts. I echo many of the reasons stated before me to justify this opposition. It is clear that planning and the Design Review Commission egregiously erred in such a rushed approval. I ask and encourage you to send the project back with instruction to follow protocol and respect the details contained in the comprehensive plan and input provided by the citizens of this community tonight. I respect the applicant, but did the city error in approval to date for them? The public was hardly made aware of or allowed to comment on the design of this structure and what impacts it has to the downtown district, its businesses, and the residents within it. A comprehensive traffic study by an independent firm simply must be a bellwether to even consider the approval for a project with 131 rooms in such an already congested area and on such a tiny footprint within the surrounding areas we have. The rooftop bar and lounge presents an additional and significant issue for residents around, above, and below this operation. The rooftop bar, while although apparently presented to be under 3,000 square feet, avoiding independent review and study, will indeed significantly add to the downtown traffic congestion and lack of parking already for patrons on Sherman Avenue, and seems not even to be considered as an addition to the impacts of the hotel project at the same time. It also poses significant impacts on surrounding residents concerning lighting, noise, and other disturbances not reviewed previously. In my opinion, this 3,000-square-foot exclusion of the gray, is kind of a gray area in the parking guidelines to follow for a developer and for the Design Review Commission and the city planning. This bar and lounge, which is open to the general public, should be carefully considered and added to the scope of this project, as it's very impactful as both a standalone operation, as well as in addition to the 131 guest rooms and what impact they will have on us, and why so many of us are here tonight in opposition of this project as submitted. I also find it remarkable that the setback requirements are not a significant consideration to you as a council, for the Design Committee, and for our community. Sherman Avenue is simply being closed in upon and encroached by this structure, while not quite like squeezing a square peg in a round hole, as it does eventually fit. However, this allowance certainly squeezes a size 14-foot into a size 10 shoe. The building, parking, and 131 rooms with approximately 500 patrons at capacity, plus the bar and lounge operation, the impact on other business to the residential community and our valued view corridors are much impacted. I certainly seem to, seems to me that this design approval was granted much too hastily. Please listen to all of us as citizens, business owners, and residents of Coeur d'Alene. This project, as submitted, does not fit in many ways and will certainly lead to litigation. Thank you again.
Thank you. Joe Arkham, I can get that much of it, but the rest of it is opposed, but did not ask to speak. Lila Tatum is opposed, but did not ask to speak. Cindy Donato is opposed, but did not ask to speak.
I actually did sign up on the other sign-up sheet that did ask for speaking.
Did you wish to speak?
I do wish to speak.
Please, step forward then, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, I come to you today in opposition of this project and appeal to you not by code, but I'm going to speak to you from my heart. You have difficult jobs, and I don't even know if you get paid. And our city and our city employees have failed us here. They have not properly studied the zoning and implications to the neighborhood and realized that the decisions that they make are nearly 100-year decisions. These will impact our community for generations to come. And so, I appeal to your hearts that you take that to heart and you consider remanding this back to the Design Review Commission and ask them, as well as the city employees, to do their job and to do it properly, so that we can steward this community for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Clennert is opposed and did not ask to speak.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Jim Sawhill, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I support the appeal of the Review Committee approval for the Marriott Hotel. Previously, I submitted written information, which I'm sure you've reviewed, and I believe that several of the design standards have not been met, specifically the sidewalk uses along Sixth Avenue, the massing, particularly the base massing, does not meet standards. Ground-level details are basically absent. I don't think they meet standards. The ground-floor windows along Sixth Avenue don't have sufficient window areas to meet standards, and unique historical features have not been followed, and I don't believe that standard has been met. Three of these have been brought up in the appeal, and according to your attorney, should be discussed tonight and considered, and so I wish you would consider those and basically return this project for redesign. The design guidelines contain text, graphics, and, excuse me, pictures. The graphic and pictures are important in design guidelines. They set expectations for the applicant to follow, and they also set expectations for the community on what we should see. And I believe these have been basically ignored. I think one of the biggest failures of this project is, they have not embraced the color palette of downtown and the materials in the downtown area or in the design guidelines. When you look at the elevations, I think one of the biggest failures is the selection of colors and materials in their elevations. This is a Marriott prototype design that has been adapted for this site. They never looked at the design guidelines when they started this project. They took one of their prototype designs, adapted it to the site, and then after the fact, tried to justify it to our design standards. And that's a wrong process, and they need to start over. This project is out of context for the location and the downtown. It belongs out on I-95, not here in the downtown core. My main objection, again, is the colors and materials. The downtown core is filled with new buildings that have adhered to the guidelines and added to the downtown and blend into the fabric of downtown. And this is a very key location along Sherman, and we just need to ask them to do better. And next, I'd like to talk about traffic. I believe a traffic impact analysis was, should have been completed before this project was heard. A driveway on Sherman is just a bad idea. A driveway onto Sixth Avenue would be a better location. I think both those locations should be studied in the TIA to understand the impact of allowing a driveway versus Sherman, and so we can make good decisions. Try to summarize. I guess I would urge you to uphold the appeal, return this project to redesign and modification to the applicant, and after that redesign, bring it back to the Design Review Committee for another shot. And thank you.
Thank you. Linda Woolovich signed up. Did you wish to speak? When you finish speaking, please fill out the correct form.
Okay. It was just laying over there, that piece of paper, and that's all I saw when I came in. There were about six people on there ahead of me. Anyway, my name is Linda Woolovich from Coeur d'Alene, and I believe all of these people have done...
Who's faced the mic?
I believe all these people have done due diligence. I really am not, I don't have any skin in the game. I don't live down here, but I am a member of the community of Coeur d'Alene. We've always done our best to keep Coeur d'Alene, Coeur d'Alene, and keep that historic vibe and charm, and that's what people come here for. And I really looked at that drawing, that rendition of that. It's an albatross. It can't be that way. So, no matter what happens, my alliteration for tonight is, "Make Marriott meld. Make them meld in to our community." That's all. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Brad Jordan, did you wish to speak?
Well, mayor and members of the council, so you may not have to worry about people clapping after I speak, but, so I'm going to encourage you to approve this hotel. Now, if you need to send it back to Design Review and do some tweaking around on it, that's one thing. I don't know if there's anything you can do to please everybody on this project. You've got a little bit of the same situation as with the Coeur d'Alene North and the One Lakeside Tariff. Lakeside Tower that went up, where there was a piece of land sitting there for years and years and years, and the HOA probably could have bought it at some point, and they never did. So someone should have the right to develop this property. I've been involved in downtown since the 1980s, co-chairing the revitalizations with Sandy Bloom, and I was involved in the high-rise ordinance back in the early 2000s, and I've worked with some very talented people at urban design and revitalization over the years, and so I learned what makes downtowns work. And a hotel in this, in this location is a good use. It's getting towards the fringe area of the downtown core, and it could use more pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks to support the businesses. The reason the downtown is thriving like it is right now is because of the low-rise, mid-rise, high-rise developments that have gone in, they're bringing residents in the downtown. The Coeur d'Alene Resort brings a lot of people in that support the businesses. The new Coeur d'Alene Resort Tower is going to do that as well, and this will help. And like I said, this is in an area that could use some more pedestrian street traffic. So, you know, you've got a six-story hotel building, and you've got people in a 20-story building that aren't happy about it, and people across the street in a seven-story, you know, building that aren't happy about it. And we haven't heard anything about the impacts those buildings caused, but it's impossible to move forward and do any development with something that doesn't have some impacts on people. So it's unfortunate, but it's just kind of how progress is. You can't, you can't have any progress without having some impacts on people. So I think, like I said, if you need to do some more tweaking on the design, I think you could do that, but I think there's a hope out there that if this is held up long enough, the developers will give up and leave town. I don't know about the, you know, the colors, you know, maybe something could be done with that. I think there's a good contrast right now, because I think the town suites that just opened over by where the old Outback Steakhouse was by the freeway, that's a pretty cookie-cutter looking suburban hotel. This one has been dressed up quite a bit. So I think that they've made, I think they've made attempts to meet the design guidelines, and so again, I'd urge you to try and find a way to approve this and move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now provide the applicant five minutes to rebut. Just a minute.
I'm sorry, I signed up online to speak.
You signed what?
I signed up online to speak.
I'm sorry, I didn't get anything. Come on forward. And Troy, we have one more person that signed up online that we're not aware of. I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no worries. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Here we go again.
Would you please give us your name, please?
Tom Barubi, and I live in a different neighborhood being destroyed by big development in this town. Anyway, I'm here with my insane neighbors, taxpayers, voters of Coeur d'Alene. I use the word insane because by definition insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. But we know how this ends, and I challenge this council to prove me wrong. At this point, all of you must realize that the comp plan is seriously flawed. Even the Hayden City Council figured it out, and I hope this council does too. Why is every project proposed a high occupancy project? Developers say they care about our neighborhoods, right up to the point where it costs them profits. Then all bets are off. Look at the Kaufman project. I'm sure the designer won't be living there, and instead of a few houses to fit the neighborhood, the project is going to stuff as many duplexes as possible to maximize profit at the expense of all the existing neighbors. On another project, I was happy to read that council member English will have another gas station to choose from. But what about the neighbors that previously bought their houses there because it was a nice neighborhood, and now will be impacted every day? We know that growth is inevitable, but it can't be this out-of-control, everything-maximum-density mantra. The comp plan must be revised and developers held accountable fully to fund their impact to our infrastructure. Our tier road widening to support their increased traffic, sewer treatment plant capacity expansion, additional fire life safety needs, why should these costs be passed on to the Coeur d'Alene taxpayers? In closing, I'd like to encourage every person here tonight to look around when they leave this meeting, because Coeur d'Alene will never be as beautiful as it is right now. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll let the applicant come forward. You have five minutes, and then the appellant will have five minutes.
Great. Good evening again, Mayor Hammond and members of the council. Just wanted to summarize. I mean, I did hear a lot of, you know, testimony regarding how we're not meeting the standards, although I didn't hear a specific area that we're not meeting the standards that I could address. You know, the DRC found that we met all those standards, and it's in a detailed report on how we met all those standards. When starting this project, yes, we met with staff to go over high-level standards, you know, zoning ordinance, process types of questions. And that's really the benefit of the developer, for us to understand the process, have it work more efficiently. You know, no design decisions were made until we went to the DRC. There was public input at the DRC that was heard. So, you know, and I really, my architect might take a little more offense to this, but I do take offense. I think we designed a really good-looking project that we can be happy with and, you know, the neighborhood can be happy with. You know, we looked at that, that design guidance was, you know, how we based the design of our building and worked backwards. This is a completely custom-designed hotel. It's not a cookie-cutter, you know, Marriott product. This is a custom hotel, and we're really happy with it. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The appellant may now provide some closing comments. Thank you.
I moved here seven years ago after a 45-year career as a real estate developer, running an architectural firm. I built hotels, office buildings, medical office buildings. I built a few Marriotts. And I must say that I would never have gotten this far in any of my projects without voluntarily having a community meeting to hear what my neighbors thought about what I was going to do and come up with a better design as a result of that. Much like a bestselling author, they don't come up with a bestselling book just by what they write on themselves, by themselves. They have editors, copywriters, readers, marketing people. It takes a lot of people to come up with the best solution. I believe that if they had involved the community ahead of time, they would have learned a lot about what our concerns are. They're not from this town. They don't understand. I don't think a lot of our staff actually understands what parts of the city care about. So there are many shortcomings in this whole process. Some of them need to be addressed in our code so that future situations won't occur like this. But as I said before, I think the city has an obligation to regulate and control traffic under code, and they need to do that before we get back to looking at what this project should be. I think that this developer probably has a relationship with the AC Hotel line of Marriotts, and they need to maximize the number of rooms that they can get into a hotel like this. By asking them to set it back further from the curb to preserve views, make it a little less bulky, not close down Sherman, they probably wouldn't be able to make the economics work. That doesn't mean that can't be another type of Marriott that would fit in a smaller hotel, less rooms, maybe bigger rooms, more boutique. There are several things that could be approached here that would resolve the problems. Design Review Committee, I know from people who are on it, they think they're a rubber-stamp group. They have been told that they can't argue, and that's, that, we're relying on them to know what the pulse of the city is and what people care about. And in this case, I think they made several significant errors that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now close the public hearing. And Randy, can you clarify again, or Hillary, there was more than one suggestion that proper notice was not being given, and I thought I read something where that is not correct.
That is not correct. The notices set out that was actually given is in the findings of the Design Review Commission. The notice was published on January 6th. The Design Review Commission meeting was on the 25th. The code requires 15 days' notice. The notice was posted on the property on January 11th, 14 days before the hearing, which is consistent with the code. And property, notices to property owners within the required distance was also mailed out on January 10th. I think what the, what some of the speakers are confusing is what hearing, what meeting notice is required for. Notice is not required for a project review because the public is not a participant in project review. Notice is not required for the initial meeting with staff because the public is not allowed to attend that. The notice is related to the meeting of the Design Review Commission, which, as I pointed out and is in the findings of fact, was appropriate under the code.
Thank you. Okay, it's now before the council, like, what?
Can we ask questions of the people who have offered testimony?
No, that, it's just discussion among the council at this point.
No clarifications on anything?
No.
We can ask questions of staff, correct?
Yes.
Good. I would like to do that.
Okay.
I have a question for Hillary then, which was, it was brought up regarding measuring the grade, or no, was the massing of the building, 72 feet, right?
Yeah, 75 feet.
75 feet.
And then if you look at the development standards for the downtown, there are some provisions in there, so let me tell you which section of the code this is. 17.05.690, which is the basic development standards maximum height, and it says mechanical penthouses, stair, elevator, overruns, and antennas may be excluded from the building height calculation, provided they are not more than 15 feet above the roof deck.
Okay, and so it's 75 feet, measured from where?
Average finished grade.
So you take the lowest and the highest?
Yeah, and then you figure out the midpoint of the grade, and then you measure up to the tallest point.
Okay. There was also something was brought up about the square footage of the dining room.
Right.
That triggered something else, so.
And so it sounds like the calculation for that, Tammy and I were talking about that, that included restrooms, that included the kitchen, that was not the square footage of the dining area, is also probably included the outdoor patio space, so that's not.
What's the trigger then?
How our code calculates it.
What is the trigger for that?
It's, Tammy, do you want to speak to the?
Sure.
Okay. We'll bring Tammy up as well. So typically, we would just look at the dining area, if they had a kitchen included and that sort of thing, but the outdoor patio, as Hillary mentioned, is not included in that overall calculation. They're showing a restroom on there, it's not included in that calculation, so it was under the 3,000-square-feet.
So what are the numbers then?
Specific numbers for each one, I don't have that.
Yeah, apparently there was a number that above a certain size, it triggers something.
Yeah, if it's over 3,000-square-feet, we would have to count as parking.
Okay.
So minimum parking would be two per thousand, maximum would be four per thousand, but the square footage of this is under 3,000, which did not trigger parking.
The square footage of the dining room only?
Correct, the restroom, the bar.
And it doesn't count the bar that's six floors up?
It's only counting the bar.
Not counting the restaurant.
The lower area is not for the public. It's just the bar on the sixth floor that's open to the public.
So the restaurant in this building is not open to the public?
Correct.
I will not question the capitalistic motives of the Marriott Corporation, but that seems really dumb. I think that's it. The rest were just clarifications on some of the items brought up.
Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy, my questions are for you, some of them. Through some of the testimony, there were a couple of things brought up. The question about the condition of the design review was the traffic study, but you're telling council we have no authority to ask about a traffic study or consider a traffic study, but it was a condition of the Design Review Committee. So walk me through that, why we wouldn't consider it.
Well, because the Design Review Commission didn't have the authority to talk about that. So it would be like any other body saying something, making a recommendation that's outside their authority. Is that something that is enforceable? No, just because they mention it does not, or condition it, does not mean that they had authority to do so. So you have to ignore that because you don't have authority to overturn it based on a condition that they had no authority to impose.
So in our packet, just for the record, it's mentioned several times. The city engineer mentions it, Design Review Committee mentions it, the staff report mentions it, public comment mentions it, and so it feels wrong to not, to not consider it. It feels like such an obstruction of our authority.
Well, this is, this is the mechanism, the process that council, a previous council, established, and traffic will be addressed at a later time. It's just not, this is not the appropriate, this is not the appropriate time under the code to address those issues.
Thank you. I really want to hear that part of the answer. So it will be addressed at a future time by the city engineer.
Yes, as the building permit is moved forward, as the development proceeds, traffic entrances to the building, all of those are looked at to make sure they are consistent with the code.
Okay. None of that will come to council. That's entirely our city engineer?
That's correct. This is not a, this is not asking for any kind of permit that's appealable. It's not a subdivision, it's not a special use permit, it's not a variance.
Okay. I trust, though, that our city engineer understands and has heard some of the concerns. Another thing was brought up, you explained about the public notice, but there was a point made about the spirit and the intent of public notice. Can you respond to that? Because it, I understand that staff did what was, what was directed by code, but if we want to reassure the public about the spirit and intent, what would be your advice going
The public had opportunity to address the Design Review Commission, and I believe that hearing went for quite a while, and a lot of people testified. The public has testified tonight. So the public has had a minimum of two opportunities to address both the commission and council on this matter. So I'm not sure what more council can provide, because that's as much as any council and anybody would provide.
I think the crux of it is, though, is what we're able to consider. It's not about whether they're able to tell us what their concerns are, it's what we're able to consider.
And, you know, the council established a Design Review Commission, which is responsible for applying the design guidelines, which are narrow. So I think council has to understand that there are, there are areas of responsibility for the various commissions of the city, and the Design Review Commission was provided a specific, very narrow authority to review the design standards adopted by city council. To go outside that, just because somebody would like to go beyond that, that's, that could result in chaos in terms of how a council is to evaluate things. It doesn't give the applicant fair notice of what they're going to have to respond to. So I think the Design Review Commission did its job. the Design Review Commission did its job. Council has to review it in that light. And then as the project moves forward, there are other instances at which the project is looked at by staff primarily.
I think we, at least me, I'll speak for myself, I'm understanding that we probably, we will, hopefully in the future, go back and revisit some of the authority and guidelines. But I do have one, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to speak to the Marriott. Sir, if I may ask you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot your first name.
Parker Lane.
Parker, thank you.
Yeah.
I should have written that down, I apologize. Parker, we've, we've heard a lot tonight about what's allowed, what isn't allowed, whether you've met the Design Review standards or not. And I know that your corporation feels that they have. So my question to you is, when you meet standards versus considerations, what, what considerations would you maybe be willing to make? I mean, you've heard from the community. And that, that is something maybe we wouldn't be able to make you do. But I would hope you would be open to considerations, and I guess I just want a response to that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what I'll, what I'll say about the process, you know, we started the process and we, you know, went through the process, met all the requirements. And yes, we've heard from members of the public at both the DRC and here tonight. And yes, consideration has been taken. We've already made some design considerations based on some public testimony and conditions that were put at the DRC, so.
Would you make more? Do you feel like you would make more?
I'm not going to make a public commitment here tonight, just not knowing what that is. But they are heard and we, we do consider, you know, all, all public comments, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's all for now.
Jan?
Let's see, Randy, just to, just to kind of clarify for me. One, it's not in question that they have a right to, you know, build a hotel. We're not asking for any variance, it's not a PUD or any of that. So it's a, a quite narrow lane, as I read the things tonight, you know, we're deciding just on, you know, you know, what they did, the testimony tonight and all that, so. But I agree with Christie, and I think no matter however the vote comes out, I think we're, I bet we'd be unanimous that we need to go back and look at this and do some things. But that's, that's not our job tonight, I guess. And you can say if this is a appropriate question to get answered. But frankly, out of all of that, one of the biggest things that jumped out at me is, well, yeah, what about Cartelane, Fourth of July Parade and all? How, how do we deal with stuff that happens on Fourth, I mean, on Sherman Avenue? Or can that be answered?
Well, there's quite a detailed plan for things like Cartelane, which includes no parking on Sherman during the event. So all of the business along, businesses along Sherman Avenue have to deal with those events. And recognize that they have, parking is, is in a different place when that happens. Pedestrian traffic is, is altered. But those are the, those are the prices we pay for the events that the city seems to want.
So we're not going to say, no, Fourth of July, no, whatever.
No, that's not a-
And again, when this, you know, if this keeps going through the process, again, this is one, kind of a little, little piece of the whole big thing. But when they go to actually build something, get permits or something, there's a whole nother, I mean, that's when you really get to something nitty gritty, is that right?
Yeah, there are quite a lot of standards in the code and in the building code, all of which apply, and all of which the plans that are ultimately submitted have to comply with.
Okay, thank you.
Kiki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just got a couple of things here. I wanted to clarify that this project did not go to Planning and Zoning Commission, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm bringing that up because there were some comments made about Commissioner Fleming being a designer for Marriott. And Commissioner Fleming would not have heard this particular project because she's not on the Design Review Commission, she's on Planning and Zoning. So I, I think that was a little unfair to not clear that up.
Thank you.
I think there were some errors made here, some things I agree with, Council member English, that we should review. But I wanted to clarify a couple of things here. This rooftop restaurant, and Hillary, and this is going to be a question for you, I think, it said that it did not trigger, if I heard this right, it did not trigger the parking requirement for the structure because it was 3,000 square feet and it wasn't open to the public. Was, was that accurate?
There's two different dining areas in the hotel.
Right.
So the dining on the first level is for hotel guests only.
Correct.
The dining on the sixth floor is open to the public. And the area that's calculated per the adopted code is less than 3,000 square feet. So it doesn't trigger additional parking calculation.
So it's the restaurant dining area of both locations combined is less than 3,000 square feet?
No, because the other one is, it's just for hotel guests, so you don't double count hotel guest parking for that hotel dining.
So the upstairs decktop, where there's a restaurant, which is
Correct.
10,000 square feet?
Right.
That deck is open to the public?
Right, that is.
So that would be, if it were calculated in the restaurant calculations, would it trigger the parking requirement?
I don't know the square footage of that. I guess Tammy and, or we might have to call the help and backup. It did not, how we looked at it per code, it didn't trigger that. So we don't require parking for anyone that has dining outside in, in Cartelane. We have it just for the enclosed areas.
So that could quadruple the number of people on the rooftop dining area on a busy day in the summer. But it wouldn't do anything to trigger an increase in required parking for the facility?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
I feel like that might be a miss on, if Design Review, but we are, we are now in this gray area whether parking is something that Design Review had purview over in the first place? Or is it traffic that Design Review didn't have? And in my mind, I think this is, this is kind of a real gray area that Design Review could have gotten it wrong. Help me out with this.
The Design Review standards, guidelines, with respect to parking, only deal with surface parking. Surface parking lots, landscaping for surface parking lots, this is underground parking. And so the Design Review guidelines do not apply. But the other code provisions apply. So the 3,000 square foot limitation is actually found in the DC zoning code requirements, not the Design Review guidelines.
And so today, we can't do anything with the project because what we're debating here is the miss or inaccuracies of Design Review commissions. But if they missed this parking requirement, they would have not missed this parking requirement, that would have been a staff issue. Am I tracking correctly with that?
Design Review would not have reviewed for parking calculations, that's correct. And to clarify, it wasn't a miss on staff's part, that's how the code is written and was adopted by city council, how parking calculations are done. Now, that could be looked at with a future amendment, but the current code doesn't.
And I think that's what we're running up against here a lot. There's a lot of policy things that probably aren't appropriate. I agree with Mr. Jordan that there was going to be high rises in this downtown area and that is probably an appropriate use. But there's a lot of things in here. I, I also think, I heard you say that it could be 222 feet high in this particular, on this particular lot?
220.
220 feet high?
Correct.
But then the massing would have it have to be scaled in? And it would be a whole different conversation that we're not talking about tonight. I guess where I'm going with that is trying to separate all of the information that we brought forward that falls under the, there's been probably some code review and some policy issues we need to look at. But was the error made by staff or by Design Review and their findings? Or are we just looking at disagreements in policy and code? So I'm kind of feeling like that's a lot of what's happening here, is it's disagreements and where we're at with code and what, you know, how that affects what happens in the downtown. But I'm, I'm not finding a huge amount, except for possibly in this parking area, which we don't think that we have the ability to talk about, that the, the, the Design Review Commission erred. So I'm just leaning that way.
Go ahead.
I think my question may be- Oh, go ahead. On that parking comment. So in the downtown core for a hotel, you can provide .5 parking stalls per unit or point one, or one point, or one parking stall per unit. This applicant provided one stall for every unit. Versus another hotel that was recently approved did .5. So as far as that, they provided more parking for the hotel than was necessary. So just to clarify that.
Thank you. Amy?
I believe my question, Hillary, it may be back to you or possibly Chris. And it has to do with the pedestrian, pedestrian oriented streets, both Sixth Street and Sherman. So Sherman east of Sixth Street is no longer considered a pedestrian oriented street.
Correct.
But Sixth Street itself is.
That's correct.
Can you please review how that impacts this project once more? I know you did it at the beginning.
Yes, I am happy to do that. And so where that language comes from is the Design Guidelines for the downtown. And so that clearly differentiates what streets and what sections of streets within the downtown are considered the pedestrian oriented versus vehicular oriented. And that allows for the vehicles to be, to access the project. So whereas it seems like it shouldn't have had the access into and out of the structure from Sherman Avenue that just, you think that Sherman Avenue is walkable. Well, when this was adopted in 2006, that designated certain streets. And so when Mr. Patano, who was on the commission at that time, that was the code at that time. We just weren't having any projects in that area that were requiring that. So the pedestrian oriented street, in this case, is on Sixth. And so that doesn't allow for vehicular access unless they requested a design departure. So they could have done that, but they didn't because they had access that was easily allowable on Sherman. There was already existing curb cuts on Sherman Avenue and it was designated as a vehicular oriented street.
Okay.
Can I have a further question on that to do with the traffic study? But I don't think that impacts a decision tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I follow up on Amy's?
Just a minute. What did you do, something? Okay.
I just want to follow up on Amy, what Amy just asked you. So they could have requested the Sixth Street entrance. And that would have been maybe an allowance made by Planning and Zoning or by your office. Can they still do that?
Well, it, they could have, yes, but the project has been approved. So I guess it depends on how the, the decision goes this evening. But they're allowed by right to have their access on Sherman Avenue. So there was no need for them to request a design departure. And while we can't speak to the traffic study this evening, the traffic study, had there been an issue with the design, with the traffic study, when that, and it has been completed, did not show an issue, had it, it would have to go back to Design Review Commission because they'd have to redesign the building. So it would have to go back through that process anyway.
Those are one of the considerations I was speaking of. Mr. Mayor, can I still ask questions? Do you want me to wait my turn again?
No, go ahead.
I would like to get a little bit down into the, Hillary, a little bit down into the weeds, thank you. Mr. Sawhill talked about the standards. He didn't feel that the standards were met, specifically the windows, the materials, the colors. Can you speak to that?
I will see if I can pull out his letter that he submitted. Bear with me while I figure out where in the packet that one is.
I think it's in the public comment, he's got his-
Right, here we go, thank you, yes. Okay. So which one, were you speaking of, the windows?
Mr. Sawhill.
Correct, but you're speaking to all of his comments?
Windows, the materials, the colors, his comments that, that it did not meet the design standards. Can you clarify that?
I can, yes. So he is referring to standards, but not specifically including the language of the standards on those. So he's speaking about that the gray brick is out of character under the massing. And there's nothing in the Design Guidelines or standards that speaks to color of brick or even requiring the use of brick. So, so that's just kind of a, a personal opinion about how it does or does not comply. The, let's see, what's this one? The ground level details. He says, let's see, the standard's not met, Design Guidelines provide a list of 13 design elements that may be incorporated into a project, five of the elements are required. Sherman Avenue elevation has three of the 13 design details that are listed in the guide. And then he says Sixth Street elevation has two listed details. And he says, a significant area on Sixth Street is blank wall, no treatment to mitigate its impact. So that is incorrect. If you looked at the details from the Design Review Commission packet, including the minutes and the findings, it included, there's a condition of approval that was required to make sure that it met that. And that's that they are going to be working on some architectural or some artistic mural along Sixth Street to make sure that it met that requirement. And in the packet you received, the applicant slides show all the ground level details and everything that ensured that that was met. So that was how the commission found that that guideline was met, was through the one additional condition plus all of the details that were provided. And I can certainly pull up that slide if that's helpful to see the details. The ground floor windows, this is one where maybe your question that came up earlier. On Sixth Street, the challenge there is the grade change. So let me get our computer to back alive here, okay. And so one of the requests that the applicant team had made was to have that weather protection, that it didn't have to be this certain height from the sidewalk because the sidewalk's going down. And so the design doesn't work. Well, that's true of the windows too. If you walk into the hotel and you're on the same level, your windows are up here, but your building's going down to the south as you're walking toward the alley and toward the park. And so the challenge is there's a parking garage down there. So you can't have the, the windows at that lower level. But the commission was able to see kind of the whole design in totality and see that it does meet that because of the nature of the building, the grade, which you can't change. The fact that there was, that was the main level, they have very tall windows that are continuous along that plane. And then they were going to add the additional architectural or artistic details on Sixth Street. So let me see if I can find this one to show you. Let's see here, okay. So here is, this one is specific to treatment of blank walls. But this shows you kind of those windows, this is Sixth Street. So you can see, if you were here on Sherman and you're walking south along there, the commission did ask those questions and asked if they could lower these windows. But that doesn't make sense if you're, this is your parking structure here at this concrete wall. But these are oversized windows that do engage with the street. And then the detail, the condition for the approval of the design was to work on this aspect of it to make sure that that was a little bit more interesting, visually interesting, either through architectural, so use of materials or articulation of the wall or a mural. And so they have worked with the Arts Commission on getting that accomplished. And then they did meet it with kind of all these other features. This isn't the right slide for the one, but you can see some of the other ones that he addressed. The unique historical features as well. This one, again, is something that for future changes to our code and Design Guidelines, we can look at because it's very vague. So as the Design Guidelines that were adopted read, it says, "In order to retain the unique character of the neighborhood and businesses, the following guidelines must be met. Retaining major elements in renovation or redevelopment," so that doesn't apply, "relating new construction to context." That's all it says. It doesn't say incorporate historical aspects, incorporate brick, look at the buildings across the street and incorporate-
Isn't that context, though?
It just says context, so it's, it doesn't say.
When I think of context, I think of the, the historic Mason Building, the brick buildings nearby, but that's just me.
Well, how that was determined by not only the commission, but as presented by the applicant team was Parkside, you have the building where the appellant lives. Those aren't architectural and don't have architectural features. There's a number of buildings on this block that don't. You have the Idaho Trust Bank that has more kind of the mid-century modern design. So there's a number of different aspects. So it depends on how far you're looking for context. And so again, that's kind of subjective and not, it doesn't have any specific criteria to apply. And that could be changed in the future. But right now, it's, all it says is relating new construction to context.
I need to give up my turn here, thank you.
Okay, I think I have a question for the, one of the Marriott folks. I want to talk about that, you know, as mentioned, and, you know, some stuff about the- I want to talk about that, you know, as mentioned, and, you know, some stuff about the, the downstairs restaurant and what I'm picturing, and you can clarify, because I'm guessing all kinds of has, have gone to a Best Western or Comfort Inn or Marriott or something, and part of the package is there's like a breakfast buffet area. You go in there and stuff, but it's not a sit-down, you know, menu kind of thing. Can you clarify what this is?
You got it, yeah. So the restaurant on the first floor is primarily breakfast. I mean, it is a breakfast offering for hotel guests. There's a selection of meats and, yeah, cereals and that type of thing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so not like the full menu kind of?
Correct, yes, that, that would be upstairs.
With a custom, yeah. Okay, well, I think that's important to clarify things.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Okay.
It's always the men.
We'll call this meeting back to order. This item is now before the council. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a comment and then do some review and then make a motion. So the comment is for everyone that we are currently, there is a committee looking at downtown designs, all the stuff you brought up. It's a committee, I'm on it, we've met once. It was actually very heartening to hear some people from the Design Review Commission and have them express their frustrations in this, too. So we understand that there are some issues that need to be dealt with. I also wanted to touch upon a little bit of the reason why we're here, and it has to do with the history of all this. So this is the original ordinance. I know you can all read this. This is the original ordinance that was passed in 2003. It's just one and a half pages, and it actually had some interesting things in there that I was happy to see. For example, it would say that the grant, the granting of such design will not be contrary to the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. It also says that the city council has a role here with regards to judgment and conformity to the other code. Now, these two items were removed from the Design Review Procedures in an ordinance that was passed in 2008, and it added a lot of language. It also restricted a lot of things that could be done, put some bumpers on it. Initial meetings with the city shall not include definitive designs, but rather broader descriptions of the development program and not objectives, the constraints and opportunities presented of the sites, and analysis of the neighborhood setting that surrounds the site. So they pulled that out. Parking was pulled out. The requirement for photographs and buildings, gone. A lot of this was, was new language that was stuck in there. Then in May of 2020, which you probably, if you've been to the last couple of meetings, you heard about the meeting that we had in May of 2020. Understand, that was right when COVID hit, and we had most of the council here, actually all the council was here except Mr. Widmire was sitting in the center seat. And we were presented in May with updates to Design Review, and it was done over Zoom. So, I mean, we didn't even have all the staff here. In our packet, there were two sections that were going to be amended. The first one had red lines, and the red lines told you what's added to the code and what's taken out of the code. The second section did not. It just presented these many pages, and I don't know how many there are here, but it presented all these pages that had no red lines in them. Now, I admit, it's, it's my responsibility, it's all of our responsibility to ensure that what we're being presented here is what we're making a decision on, but it didn't have any red lines, and the version with the red lines is right here. And as you can see, there were a tremendous amount of additions and subtractions from the code that included a lot of the things that have brought the fun into dysfunction in this whole process. This is where we pulled one of those meetings. I mean, Joan mentioned the code that was written on the website, so it was all gutted here, and things could be waived. The process was basically narrowed the focus of the committee. This is a lot of heavy-duty stuff that was added to the code and pulled out of the code right under our noses, and we had no idea. Now, I'm, the buck stops here, it's our responsibility. We should have been on this and asked, is this, you know, this is being presented to us and there's no red lines, but it was presented to us without red lines. So we had no idea that we were being told to change something in such a massive way. We were told housekeeping, and here we are, now having to deal with some of the fallout of that because we're the ones who get the blame when this kind of stuff goes sideways. And so to say what I said earlier, we are addressing it. So the committee's meeting, it's discussing the importance of downtown. We have heard the public. All these issues will be raised. That's going to be after this. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. My motion is to refer back to the Design Review Commission for further action and clarification. The Design Review Commission's approval of DR 124AA CDA Hotel LLC Marriott Hotel located at 602 and 612 East Sherman Avenue. Would like to direct staff to prepare findings and orders specifically on one item, which is the unique historic features, which I feel, I mean, you've got to understand, we're kind of limited here on what we can talk about, all the good points you brought up. I believe they're all valid, but again, hands are tied. I would like to see staff and the Design Review Committee work with Marriott to come up with something that looks like it belongs in Coeur d'Alene. That building there could be in Denver.
Let's just do your motion first.
That's the motion. That's my discussion, and now I'm done.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second, is there a discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That building looks like it could be in Denver, or Madison.
Call on you.
Mr. Mayor?
That's why I have a gavel.
Woody has something. Thank you. The reason I support the motion, no, I don't think, we're not trying to stop a project. That's not going to happen. I think everyone understands that. But it really does matter what the project ends up being in our community. And I would think that Marriott Corporation, you have a stellar reputation. I think you would want to be accepted by the community, liked by the community. Make sure you fit in, and I would hope you would go to, to extra effort. I understand it's extra expense, I get that, but over the long term, I hope that you recoup some of that expense because you would even have community people that live here using your facilities. So I absolutely going to support that for the historic view of the building. I think that you could come up with something that could be brilliant, and we would like it, and it clearly needs to happen because we just have too many differences of opinion on, on this, the modern look, the colors. Well, aside from the things we can't do anything about, but I would really hope that you would consider also different avenues of how to, to enter the building. So I'm going to second and vote in favor of that motion.
You already did second.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a comment?
Woody?
Well, you brought, Mr. Gookin brought up some historical perspectives, and so did Brad Jordan, and I was thinking about those days and the way it started and how it evolved. And in those 17 years that we were talking about, we were still kind of getting downtown going, you know? We were hoping things would start blooming, you know, Park, Park Tower, Lakeside, all these places where all of a sudden people are living downtown. We didn't have that 17 years ago. So everything is relatively in our world, in our time, and it's, and I get what the folks are saying. Again, it's, and you did a great job, Gook, tracing it back and seeing how it changed. I don't think we had the perspective of what was going on. We needed growth. We wanted people living downtown. We wanted to support that, and I think now we're kind of going, oh, geez, we need to relook at it and make some adjustments. And you've been preaching that for at least four years that I know you've been talking about parking. We've backed off the parking so people could afford to live down here and all that, and it's catching up with us now, you know? All the parking and McEwen helped a lot. So again, just, it brought, it kind of triggered some old history in my brain that I remember the, what it was like when we didn't have it, and now we are so successful and we have so many folks that want to be here. Most of these folks are here for the same reasons. I don't have a conclusion, sorry.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make the comment that I'm still stuck on this parking study issue, whether this and that could be done. So I guess what it was down to is we're going to have to trust our engineer, Mr. Bosley, because the condition of the approval said that the recommendations shall be installed. And so I would just encourage a lot of look for pedestrian safety, what happens on the street, what can be done with the ingress egress, if anything, if they, I mean, our parades were brought up, the turning into a turn lane was brought up, a lot of things on traffic that are very different and unique with this pedestrian versus street entrance. And I really hope that whatever happens in there has some very positive effect.
Amy?
I have a question for Randy in regards to the motion on the unique historic features. In the Design Review Commission findings, page 31A40, it states, the design, Commission design guidelines require new projects to relate to the context of the downtown's historic features. The existing site is a vacant property with lawn, so the property doesn't include any renovation or redevelopment. As a new construction project, the proposed building relates to the surrounding context with the use of brick as a predominant exterior finish. The massing of the building with a base middle and top, the scaling of the building as a stepping stone between the smaller buildings along Sherman Avenue and the high-rise residential Parkside Building. Sorry, my progressives get, throw me off here. The design of the building is a contemporary structure that relates to the primary modern surrounding architecture. So they address that in A40 with the motion from Councilman Gookin. Can we ask, is it appropriate for us to ask for more to be done as it's addressed here?
Only if you believe that the commission erred in evaluating that. And I remind council that this is a factual finding that you read, and if it is supported by substantial evidence, not all evidence, but substantial evidence, then you must accept it.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Well, as I look at this, you know, to getting down to this motion, you know, be, you know, in defining the historical context and in the neighborhood, and I have a pretty long-term perspective from, you know, 1951, and at one point, you know, we lived on Garden and, you know, a house was built in like 1906 or something. So, you know, the context, time is on a continuum, but when I look at this and look at all the buildings in the background, you know, yeah, the Masonics is a nice thing, but it's an outlier. All the rest of those that stick up are in that kind of a thing, and it's, so I guess I would have a hard time supporting this on that. I mean, if you're going to drill down to that, we need to go back, we need to look at other things going forward, but this is what we've got tonight, and I don't, you know, in terms of, I don't see sending it back to, you know, some other commission. I think this is a time, you know, that they've done their thing, and we need to make our, our call, and it'll go one way or the other.
Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
No.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Miller?
No.
McEvers?
No.
We now need a motion in the affirmative then, if that, because of the failure of
You need to make a decision. It doesn't have to necessarily be another motion or motion to approve. You can have another motion.
What happens if they don't make another motion? Isn't that affirmative?
Then you're violating your own code. You have to make a decision.
Well, silly us. This is not an outweigh each other, folks. If you voted in the negative, then you need to make a motion to do something differently.
Spine up.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to affirm the DRC. Sorry, got to work on the wording here. The DRC for further action, the DRC, the Design Reviews Commission's approval of DR 124AA CDA Hotel LLC Marriott Hotel located at 602 and 612 East Sherman Avenue, and direct staff to prepare the findings in order.
Second.
Have a motion to second.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor? Discussion.
Well, I'm not really seeing much value in more discussion here, but I, go ahead. Christie?
Thank you. Well, I, I would just, I'm not going to support the motion, but not because I am trying to stop project. I had just hoped that there could be more review and more considerations made, and I'm disappointed, but I understand how the elected body works, and so I just wanted to give my explanation that, why I won't be supporting it.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm not going to support it either. I have fought for parking and height restrictions downtown, and I think that's what the people want. And once again, I mean, in, just as Mr. Barubi pointed out, and I don't even know if he's still here, there you are. You know, we, we have a council that sits here and we get all this feedback, and then it seems to me that they go the other way. I would like to see it preserved the way downtown looks, and the way this comes out makes me think, it's gone. There's nothing going to save it unless you guys vote the right way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Although I, I appreciate Councilmember Gookin's desk pounding, I am in a position to say what we are charged with is to prove, agree with the applicant, that there's a preponderance of evidence that the Design Review Commission made a mistake, and then prove what that is. That's what we're here for. Am I right, Randy?
Well, that's what the appellant is here for, here to decide whether that was done.
So if, I feel like we get into this discussion that what we're trying to do is stop a project, save a project, save downtown, and that's not what this discussion is about. This discussion is about that we, there are some flaws here. The form was in error on the, on the city website. The policies need to be looked at downtown, but that's not what's before us. It's to, for us to say, do we believe that an egregious error was made with the Design Review Commission's decision based on current code, whether we'd like it or not, which I don't, and there's a lot of reasons to not like and make some changes there. But that's currently what's in front of us. Did they make a mistake based on current code? And so that's why I believe we have to, in my mind, I could not see that they made a mistake based, basing their decisions on current code and policy. And the rhetoric can continue about opinion about what, what these buildings should look like, or if we're going to lose the opportunity, that isn't something we have the ability to wait, to judge tonight. So that's, that's where I'm at with that. I don't like it. I don't think it's a good position for, for us, given all this evidence, but, but that's what we're supposed to be, that's what we're supposed to be as a judicial decision maker right now, weigh the evidence in front of us on. Right?
Further discussion?
That doesn't help your case. It's really tough to be in this. It's really tough to be in this spot. It's really tough.
Need to remember that there is guidelines, there are guidelines relative to how this particular piece of property is zoned. And if somebody comes in with an application that fits those guidelines, and they're much greater than just the Design Review, the council cannot put new encumbrances on them that are not part of the current ordinance. We don't get to change it midstream. If there's a problem with our policy, with our ordinance, certainly we should change that, but you, you can't do it after somebody's already come in with an application. Dan?
And we did, two years ago, when, the last time we had a Design Review commit, you know, appeal, we did, we asked staff. We said, this is kind of screwed up. Kiki actually made comments along those lines and said the same thing that she just did right now, which is, we need to look at this. We just started.
Okay. Clerk take the roll, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
No.
Motion carries. Now move on to, do we have people that have signed up separately for public comment?
They signed along the sheet.
So all those have been taken care of then, because everybody on that sheet is, okay. Announcements by the council? Dan?
Well, I would just give a report that this last Saturday had the first of our six, six-week series on having civil discussions amongst folks of different viewpoints, and it went very well. We had thirty people, which I, I was very happy with, and went well, so looking forward to more civil discussions.
Saying nothing else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. We had talked, council had requested a pre-budget meeting with just council, council and Mr. Timison, and of course, our new finance director. And so I'm, I'm hearing different iterations of that, that maybe it's just Councilman Gookin and Councilman McEvers that are on a committee, but we had requested that we would meet in a pre-budget meeting to give our feedback to Troy and to our new finance director. So I'd like to know if that's being scheduled? We have time before the first budget hearing.
It's scheduled.
It has been scheduled for all of us. I'm not aware of it.
On the twenty-fourth?
No, 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 that's the budget hearing with staff on the twenty-fourth.
That's not a hearing.
Excuse me, that's a budget.
We're shut.
Yeah, but that's not just with council. That's completely different.
I see what you're saying.
Completely different than what we asked. So I'm, I'm, we wanted just some time for council to discuss budget ideas with you, and, and then go back and meet with all the staff presentations.
Are you talking like an executive session?
No.
Just with him?
No. Open meeting, we're just, we come forward with our ideas on the budget, because we really don't have a lot of time for that when we're taking the staff input, which is valuable, we need it, but we don't have time to give you our input.
Would you like to do that at the next council meeting?
During the meeting? I was thinking more of a workshop.
Prior.
We could do it prior, prior to the council meeting starting, we could do maybe a hour workshop.
Let's do an hour workshop ahead of the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, apparently there is one person who was signed up on the general public comment list who does want to talk.
Oh, I apologize. Please come forward, sir, and my apologies.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Todd Hornby, and I live in the Best Hill Meadows neighborhood. First, let me say that I'm very pro-business, very free-market, and very much in favor of freedom to fuel my vehicles, lawnmower, and other tool, other tools with fossil fuels. So with that in mind, you might think that I would be very much in favor of having another gas station near my home at the corner of Fifteenth and Vest, but I'm not. I participated in the last city council meeting, and I spoke opposing the zoning change request that would allow the developer to build such a facility on that property. I'm here tonight to speak about the process that led to the zoning change from NC to C seventeen, and I'm doing this for two reasons. One, I think it's important for the council to hear how many of us feel like we were bulldozed over and to get that on the record. Number two, I think it's important for residents to be involved in the process, and now that a decision was made to make a conditional zoning change leading to a development agreement with the city, I want to make sure that we hold you all accountable to hold the developer to the conditions to which he agreed. Concerning item one, a large number of residents who would be directly affected by the zoning change attended the planning commission meeting in January and made their opposition known. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend against the zoning change because of the negative effect it could have on the neighborhood. As you know, there is already a gas station and convenience store kitty-corner to the lot in question. Adding another gas station does nothing to enhance the surrounding neighborhood, and the lack of a gas station on that corner does not negatively affect drivers looking for fuel. In addition to the existing nom-nom station, there are twenty-one other gas stations within two miles. In council's discussions, Councilman English noted the fairly even split of those in favor of and those opposed to the zoning change. Let me draw your attention to the fact that only two people who live in the neighborhood were not in opposition. One expressed support, and one said she was neutral. All of the others who were in support were employees, friends, family members, or commercial real estate agents who have a vested interest in the change. The neighbors were overwhelming in their opposition. Councilwoman Miller stated that she thought the council had an opportunity to do something good for the neighborhood, but she doesn't live in the neighborhood and doesn't get to experience all that we do with the nom-nom already on that corner. Councilman Gookin asked some clarifying questions about the parking and building placement that might negatively affect the neighborhood if the zoning were to remain NC, and Mr. Bahari said that the city staff would look favorably on a developer's request to build a project with parking on Fifteenth Street and allowing the building to back up against the properties in the rear. He said that the language in the statutes was should, not shall. This means the developer could move forward with the same design without gas pumps, and the good things that the council wanted to provide the neighborhood, i.e., a nice market that we could walk to, could be accomplished. Sadly though, the decision has been made, so now, can you tell us what the next steps are and how we can be a part of the process moving forward so that our neighborhood needs are met and that we can ensure that the development plan holds the developer's feet to the fire? Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask him a quick question, Your Honor? Just a quick, Your Honor? Did I say that?
What's that?
I was just going to ask if, I received a, a copy of an email from, I think he's the president of the HOA, Homeowners Association in that area, and I have friends who live in that area too. In any case, if you hadn't seen that, I'd encourage you to talk with him. I think he had a good assessment of what was happening there and how the development agreement situation works, and I think that most of the testimony was public comment about how that development would, agreement would come together, so I think you may, you may have a different perspective on his take. He felt that was the, it was going to be developed, and it was, it was the best of all evils, and with an agreement in place, it could end up being a good thing for the neighborhood, so I just thought I'd share that with you.
Who was that?
His name is George. I've only got an email, I mean, I'm looking for his email. It's just George Wagner.
Dan?
I just wanted to say regarding that process, Hillary, the developer's agreement does come to council for a up and down. Okay.
Potentially, tentatively? Is that correct?
Well, a development agreement has been drafted with the conditions as council outlined them, has been run by the applicant, and will be brought to council. It's not just an up or down. Council can alter the agreement as well.
And, and you said notices will go out. Okay, thank you.
I had signed that list too. I may have failed.
Somebody else is wishing to speak?
Yeah.
Where's, I have nothing with anybody else that signed up. Come on up, sir, but.
You want the public to come, sir.
I'm, I'm not faulting you. I'm looking to say.
Well, anyway, Todd is my neighbor.
Could you state your name, please?
Joe Archambeau. I'm the Best Hills Meadows president. The one you're talking about is the ranch, just that goes down best, and I know the particular individual you're talking about, and I also know your friend. Regardless, I reiterate what Todd said. The planning board knocked it down. It wasn't a iffy way, it was seven to nothing, they knocked it down. This particular fellow that's wanting to do this has since emailed us, the board, to get together with him, with the rest of the residents. We could slough it off, but we're not going to. We're going to meet with him to see what his proposals are to better supposedly this development. Regardless, we don't need a gas station, and we're going to tell him that we don't need a gas station. Now, the next step, like Todd was asking, what happens next? Is there an environmental study pertaining to burying gas tanks, the water table? Everybody knows how high that water table is on Fifteenth. So is that the next step? Will he have to perform?
In terms of the tanks, that is managed not by the city, but by the Department of Environmental Quality of the state.
Okay, so they can overturn or reject that. That's all I wanted to know. Have a good night.
Thank you. Now, can somebody from staff make sure we get both of those names for the record?
I think the list is there, is there in your stack.
Okay.
It's that last list, I think, that came through.
It looks different than the.
What's that?
The last list we passed to you, I think.
Shorter.
No, it's not on there. That's it. Anyway.
Well, anyway, next thing.
Would somebody like to do the consent calendar?
I would love to, Mr. Mayor. To approve, I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented, including resolution two four zero four four.
Second.
Have a motion second. Will the clerk take the rolls, please? The roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, Kyle? Welcome.
The Water Department's going to add a hotel, huh?
I hope not. Presentation here for you, give me just a second to get it up. Maybe? All right. Thank you, council, for having me. I'm glad I don't have the big audience we didn't have earlier. I'm here tonight to request approval for a sixteen-inch transmission lane down Thomas Lane and Fifteenth Street for a future tank. In the 2012 comp plan, the city determined with our engineers, future needs for the city as the city grows. There was future tank sites that were selected in general locations throughout the city to help with pressures. There was well sites that were selected in certain areas as the city grows, along with boosters and upgrades within the city within this 2012 comp plan. In that comp plan, we've also broken it down to show the different zones within the city. So the city has seven different pressure zones. We have two large zones, which is the upper zone and the general zone, and then we have several boosted zones that are various points in the city. We utilize our funds to try to determine the biggest need for the city for the time being. So what we've determined is, in this area over here, the city, in the upper zone, we have pressure and flow issues. This was determined in 2012. So in the comp plan, we've been trying to budget and plan for these projects to increase the pressures and flows in these areas. In that area, we determined and selected a site with the help of our engineers and acquired a site at the end of Thomas Lane and purchased that lot. We then determined the best location on that site, hydraulically, we have to be at a certain height. So we're looking at different areas on the site to make sure this would work. We determined that this site would be a good site. We purchased the site. We move forward. If you see the red dot in there, that was showing kind of a general location of the site. That would work hydraulically with the rest of the city and help increase the pressures in that zone. From then, we move forward with designing certain spots and what we would need to do to get water to that area, and what the tank site and location and impact would be. This is a basic design of a couple locations that we looked at on our lot that would meet those elevations. Once we determined that this lot would work and everything was moving forward, we moved forward with a transmission design. The transmission design implements and catches a large transmission line that comes across the city down Shattuck. We'll catch that transmission line, we'll continue down Fifteenth Street, and then we'll continue east down Thomas Lane to our property and future tank site. Because this is a large project, we broke it up into two phases. One would be the transmission main, two would be the tank. So first, we want to move forward with the tank site and approval, or, I'm sorry, with the transmission site, transmission main and approval, and then we'll follow with the tank site shortly after. And that's currently under design right now. So what we did is we moved forward with a pre-application on contractors to make sure they are qualified to bid on a large project like this. So we've gotten several contractors that qualified and were implemented into the bid process. The engineering estimate for the two sites, for the transmission main and the tank site, totaled about ten and a half to eleven and a half million dollars total for the whole project. The transmission main was estimated at four and a half to five and a half million. Fortunately, the bids came back in our favor. We've got a lot of contractors that bid back on the project. They were very competitive. As you could see, the lowest responsive bid was from Alpine Northwest at two point, just over two point three million dollars. We'd like to move forward with approval of the project to Alpine, so we would recommend that city council should accept the lowest responsive bid of two million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars, and approve construction contract with Alpine's Northwest for installation of new sixteen-inch transmission line down Thomas Lane. And I will stand for any questions.
Woody?
So, help me out. So we're putting a tank up high, so when it's full of water, it helps the pressure. Transmission is water in or water out?
Both. So the transmission main is a large transmission main that helps the water move to and from the tank sites. Unfortunately, we'd love to put a tank site in the middle of town, somewhere where we don't have to run a transmission main. Unfortunately, with elevations, you have to work with hydrology, so you have hydraulics in different parts of the area, and it's best to build up, somewhere up high on a hillside so you don't have to build a, a super tall tank. If we were in this general area, I'll go back to the map, on the comp plan, if we went back on the, let me go back to this one, on the upper zone, and we built it in a lower area down here, if we found property and it was approved, your tank would be extremely tall and extremely expensive. It's better for investment to run the transmission main out, build a tank up on the hillside, and let water flow freely back and forth, and use the elevation to help build the pressures and flows in that part of town.
So the, a size of the pipe is, seems really big, but that's to get that water up to the tank, is that?
Correct. It's to help move water to and from the tank without any restrictions as needed in the city.
Okay, so it's not like you get a well and a tank together?
Certain parts of the city you can. Unfortunately, the aquifer doesn't go out that far. We do have plans in the future for well sites, but you get the aquifer that's kind out in this area, and that's where we like to drill our wells on this end. So if you look at the comp plan, the future wells are out, out here, because we're going to get higher production wells in this area over the aquifer. We start moving down here, we do have some wells, these blue dots are current well sites, but they don't produce a lot of water. They have a lot of sand. It's good quality water, we just can't get the production out of it. So it's kind of a catch-22. We could drill a high-production well out here, then we got to get it across town. Or we could drill multiple low-production wells down here, and your cost to drill a well is about the same whether you're going to get high production or low production out of it, because it's going to be the same size casing. You might save a little bit of money on the smaller wells because you wouldn't put a larger motor, larger pump, because you won't be able to pull out of the ground as fast. You might save a little bit of money on the smaller wells, because you wouldn't put a larger motor, a larger pump, because you won't be able to pull out of the ground as fast. But you'd have to put more of them in, so your dollars go up.
And have you guys worked with Alpine before?
No, we haven't currently worked with Alpine before. They were pre-selected on different projects that they've done in the past. There were several contractors on this list that we have not worked with in the past. There are some that are, and there are some that are not, that we haven't worked with, but they all qualified with their experience.
And they're pretty significant savings over the high and the low, right?
Correct.
And you were surprised?
There's a big spread between the top and the bottom. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kyle, love your energy. Thank you so much. It's just, it's motivating after that hearing, so.
Do my best.
Appreciate your energy. The transmission line is going in first.
Correct.
And it's bigger.
Correct.
Does that affect pressure, you know, inverse square type thing?
No, so transmission mains don't necessarily affect pressure. It flows. So if you have a smaller line, it's like a garden hose. So you can only put so much water through it at a time. So we want a larger line, so it runs freely back and forth from the tank. If you have a smaller line, you're going to have restrictions, and you won't be able to get the water out of the tank when it's needed or into the tank as needed.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you. And a question for Randy. Was this the project for which we had a bid disqualified and they tried to appeal it to us?
No, that was a wastewater.
That was wastewater, okay.
Project, and Alpine was involved in that as well, but that's why they were pre-qualified. It's because staff took into consideration council's comments.
Okay, thank you.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kyle, you've certainly justified the need for the construction. So my question is about the finances, and I'm going to switch to Troy. Troy, in the staff report, it talks about their, maybe, it talks about the budget, that these funds come out of the 2324 budget at 1.5 million, paid out of capitalization, capitalization fees. Funding in this line item may need to be carried over to the next budget. So I'd like you to speak to that, how much, what you're anticipating, and then also an addendum on how to pay for part of this. It's $85,000 coming from part-time employees. Can you speak to that, and will we need to... I'm sorry, is that, that's the wrong thing?
I think you're mixing our agenda items.
That's the next one, and it's a different project.
They're not related. All right, so back to the budget. How will this carry over?
The comment there would be, we're not sure which fiscal year we'll get this done in. If they get going early, they could spend a lot of money this year, meaning end of September. And so if it's not done, we'll carry it over into next year as this project finishes up. The really positive news that Kyle is delivering is that we have the cash to do this. If this would have come in at engineer's estimates, we were going to come to you to go out and do a lease for this pipe to pay for this huge amount of infrastructure all at one time. This utility has zero debt, and we'd like to keep it that way, but the market has changed. Where if this had been engineering estimates, we don't have enough cash to do all that. Excuse me.
I love it when you give those kind of answers. I think it will, seriously, it's, it's very transparent to the public. It helps council digest it. Thank you, Troy.
Seeing no further questions, will the clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 24045, approving contract with Alpine Northwest for the installation of a new sixteen-inch, a big one, transmission lane main in Thomas Lane for the amount of $2.369,358 million.
Second. Further discussion, seeing none. Will the clerk take the roll, please?
Miller.
Aye.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yeah.
English.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Thank you, Kyle. Glenn, welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to discuss the, or to present to you the recommended approval of the reallocation of our part-time employee budget funds to pay for an upsize in the pipe to, for the Coeur d'Alene Thirty-Eighth Edition. On an annual basis, the Water Department typically budgets for four part-time employee staff to help out with the some, the busy summer months, helping out with full-time staff and the projects that we need to get done for the summer workload. And through the most recent water comp plan update that Kyle alluded to, that was previously done in 2012, we found some deficiencies in the central part of town, north of Wilbur Avenue, west of Ramsey. Previously, in the 2012 comp plan, there was a well site slated for this project, and this was the nice, beautiful alfalfa field before they started developing, if you remember that. However, well sites were needed elsewhere, and so the most recent one in this 2012, 2012 comp plan update was Ralph Capewell off of Atlas Road. Traditionally, a normal-sized twelve-inch water main would serve these areas with irrigation and domestic flows and fire flows. But we feel in this area that there's been a deficiency, and an upsize of the eighteen-inch pipe through a hydraulic study that was done from our engineering staff shows that it would help capacity and supply to this area. The supply and capacity that I'm referring to would eventually set us up for another well that is needed in this newest comp plan update in this area. Previously, we needed to allocate funds other areas, but this would set us up to potentially put us a well site up in this area or eventually connect a transmission main all the way over to our Prairie Stand pipe, which is all the way over to this eighteen-inch transmission main that we have here. In the future, our goal is to potentially bring this eighteen-inch transmission main all the way over to the next transmission main on Atlas. And I know that's a lot to comprehend, but what Kyle alluded to, with pressures and flows, it brings the tanks hydraulically equal to serve the best capacity to our customers in that area. As you well know, in the, in the Coeur d'Alene developments, that's our next focus, is to bring water over there. But we also need to focus on the, the last little bit of development that we have in the middle. Funding for this proposed purchase would be, would be just the materials to pay for the parts to install this, and that would be, need to be a reallocation of $87,000 from our part-time budget, which we went out and got three quotes from our vendors that we typically deal with, and consolidated supply came in at the lowest at $85,000, $85,222.93. And the Water Department would incur no extra cost by reallocating these funds to pay for those parts. And we feel like we would save a substantial amount of money by paying for those parts now rather than having the infrastructure put in and then having to re-dig up the streets and put a burden on the customers as well. Performance analysis, typically the twelve-to-eighteen-inch or twelve-inch mains would serve fire flows, domestic flows, irrigation. But this would, upgrading this size of pipe right now in the development stage would set us up for the future and be able to help serve capacity and supply to these areas. We recommend the City Council should approve this reallocation of funds and the purchase of the parts to install the eighteen-inch pipe in the Coeur d'Alene Thirty-Eighth Edition in the, in the cost of $85,000, $85,222.93. And I would serve for questions.
I would, thank you. You, you have certainly justified the project. Thank you. So now we're going to talk about financing with Troy again. Troy, well, back, back to you for a moment. Four people, four part-time people, the summers are busy.
Yes.
All of a sudden, we don't need those people anymore. We need this more.
We feel like this would be a huge future burden to the customers, and is a critical time to be able to install this infrastructure. Otherwise, we could, and the end result that we feel that we would possibly not be able to serve these customers enough capacity to, for irrigation and fire flows.
He is a great employee. Troy, it feels a little bit like the Water Department's been told to come up with the money for this. And I could be wrong, but why would we cut them, four people, to fund a necessary water function?
Well, a piece of this is finding those four people to fill those positions. We are struggling with part-time employees in many areas. The street department is not one. We also wanted to bring this forward to show you a partnership that is phenomenal to get the pipe in the ground at this point in time and show you that we're doing everything we can to have this happen without any additional cost to the budget, so it's kind of a reallocation.
I get the no additional cost, but what do we do about the missing labor?
That department does an amazing job and is bringing you forward a really good plan that will save the city money over time, and then again, finding the employees. So this was in their best interest as well, as they agreed to it.
Woody?
Greetings, quick one. This is Coeur d'Alene Place, right? This is kind of like the last hurrah. This is where all the growth, I mean, Coeur d'Alene Place has been around 25 years or so, and now it's getting a little more denser, it looks like. So my question there was, you think part of it is the service side of it. When you talk about irrigation, you know, I'm always moaning and groaning, people are watering all the time, and our parks guys don't even water, and our parks look great because it rains, right? So I'm wondering, is this something that you guys have to start thinking about, besides the well and transmission and stuff? The reality of people building homes with landscaping, and we don't use any water in the winter, and then we sprinkle the heck out of it. Is that part of this, or am I just dreaming too big?
It is a substantial part of it. You are, you are very correct in that. We see in the landings area, almost every day in the summer, when our peak flows, we have low-pressure complaints. And in the wintertime, as you well know, we have most of our wells shut down, and we are able to supply adequate domestic and fire flow throughout the winter. And then when we see the massive influx of irrigation startups in the spring and continue through the summer into the fall, we see major peak demands, and all of our wells are running at highest capacity possible to try to meet demands. So yes, this is a very big part of meeting those irrigation needs. So if we, if we were to, if we were to not need to meet all those irrigation needs, we would just be able to put our standard-sized pipes in the ground for fire flow and domestic use.
So is eighteen-inch kind of the new norm, you think, in the future?
It is becoming that way, yes. When I first got into the water trade, sixteen-inch was a big transmission main. And eighteen-inch is the new sixteen, and it just keeps getting bigger from there, so.
So out there on Hutter, the Terra, Terra, whatever, is that, that hasn't got water yet. Is that going to be an eighteen?
We've got our industrial stand pipe out there. We have a twenty-four-inch main that was installed in the early 2000s, I believe, that loops down to Nez Person over to Atlas. So we would be able to spur off of that, and most likely, we would refer to our engineering staff to develop a plan for the future, once we see more development in that area. But yes, we are prepared for substantial growth in those times and be able to have to upsize our pipes as well.
And isn't Prairie Avenue, don't we have water coming into Coeur d'Alene from the other side, from the Hayden side on Prairie? Isn't there some businesses that picked up water across the street there?
We, we go down to Wilbur, and then south of Wilbur, over to Government Way is our, kind of our boundary area.
Okay.
And then north up Ninety-Five into the west, up to Prairie into the west.
All right, thank you.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably know the answer to this, but why isn't the developer paying for it?
We, to be honest with you, we showed up a little late to this.
So there's already like a pipe there, and we're replacing it with something. So they've already put in the pipe?
With this, they've already put in part of the pipe, and we're, and it was discussed in our hydraulic flow model, which is only opened up every time we typically do a comp plan update. Unfortunately, there's no way to project the growth that we had in the last few years. And so we're a little late to the party on this, and we will admit that, but we're trying to scratch it and finding every bit of money we can to try to prepare for this.
Projecting the growth as part of the comp plan, but too late now. So you're not letting anyone go?
No.
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 When you first asked the city for the funding for this, what was the source?
We were trying to, that's a tough question. We were hoping to bring it out of our capitalization, capitalization fees. With all the projects that we've seen line up, it's going to be tough to fund all that stuff. With the transmission main that's going down Thomas Lane, we expected that to be much higher. When we found that it came in lower, we still, when we met with Troy and staff for our budget meetings, and all this stuff sequentially happened very fast. So if we thought we could pay for that transmission main with the cash that we had on hand, we wouldn't be able to fund this project out of capitalization fees and still pay for the transmission main as well. And that's when we opted to. We got, I got three quotes extremely quick. Within a couple of days, they came in under that $87,000 that we could fund the parts for it. And so we decided, with the trouble we've been having trying to get staff or part-time employment through the summer, we thought it might be an option to forego that and reallocate the money.
So the original source was capitalization fees?
Correct.
Which would be traditionally where you would go to do this stuff?
Absolutely, yes.
So Troy, what was the thinking behind switching it from capitalization fees to employees?
The northeast quadrant expenses. That's their priority, to get the northeast quadrant up to speed. It's a $10-million project. That is a lot of cash for that utility, which it doesn't have. So we got Phase One to come in at a very reasonable rate, and they want to take advantage of this opportunity with the developer, developer up in Coeur d'Alene Place, so they pulled off both of them with cash.
Kyle, can I ask you a question? As you're, you're, you're the head honcho, no disrespect there.
Yes, sir.
Would you rather have the, the part-time employees? Is that something you could use? I mean, is it going to affect the overtime and the hours that the other guys are working?
Yes, it'll affect our department. One of the things with this project is, it's a project with, of opportunity right now. So like Glenn mentioned, unfortunately, with the comp plan that came in, we did the hydraulic study. It showed that that main needs to be upsized and gone through. With the developer running a transmission main through there, he is required to run a twelve-inch line through there. Anything above that side would be on the Water Department no matter what, because it doesn't just affect the, the customers in Coeur d'Alene Place Thirty-Eighth Edition. It affects everything to the west of there, that whole end of Coeur d'Alene Place, west of Atlas, all the way out to Hutter. So that's the priority for this transmission main to be upsized, is to help push water that direction so our two tanks can hydraulically communicate. So when you ask, would I like to have both? Yes, I would love to have both. But right now, it's, it's a, it's a need over a want. We need this transmission main in. We need it upsized. Right now, it's a project opportunity, and it would be cheaper for us to pay for this and get it installed now and work with the developer than have the part-time staff. We'll fall behind, but we'll make double efforts to get caught up and make sure that we can get things completed.
Do you have the money in the cap fee fund for this?
Yes, we have the money in the cap fee fund, but that's allocated for the tank project on Phase Two.
Phase Two is buying the tank?
Correct.
So $85,000, you can't take that away from a $10-million project?
I would love to tell you that it's going to come under budget, like the first part of the phase did, but I cannot guarantee that. And if we can get, if we can move forward with the completion of the project over there without taking out a loan, I think that's a benefit to the city.
Was there a calculation done on the amount of overtime that we're going to be racking up because we're not going to have four part-time people?
No, there was not a calculation on that. What we would do is we would hold off on some projects and try to double our efforts next year, and then we could budget for it and catch up long-term. So a lot of times with financing on large projects or different things, if we can't feel like we can't afford them at the time, we do end up putting them off. So we have lots of large projects throughout the city where we don't have funds to complete at the time, and they slowly get pushed back. I would, I'd much rather not do those. Yes, I would still like the part-timers. I'm not sure if we're going to get them, even if we keep the dollar values there. We always have a hard time getting a full staff of part-time employees.
Dan?
Couple of things. One thing for, for Woody, and just remind all of us that we just recently, you know, changed all of the fees and stuff, and I know, so if people are using a lot of water, actually, they're paying for, paying for it now, because I, I watch, and I do watch mine closer at home and things. I also, I guess I would say that, I mean, I don't think this needs to be an either-or. I think you should keep, you know, I don't know if you're advertising, I think we should keep advertising for those. And if you can, if you get some decent applicants, and maybe you get two or something, then I think we could revisit, yeah, let's...
I think we could revisit, yeah, let's find a way to, because in the span of all of this stuff, this is, I mean, also, the kind of channel Councilman Gookin's thing sometime is that we, you know, there's a lot of projects where we say, oh, we're going to do it in-house and all that, and one of the, and, you know, he does point out that, you know, gee, if we, that's nice, but if we take them off that, aren't we something else they'd be doing? And it sounds like, oh, yeah, so, yeah.
That's not really happening on this issue.
No, but in general, okay.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mills, but my motion's going to be a little different than what's recommended. I would make a motion to move forward on this project, and with the amount of $85,222.93, but the funding of it would not come from the four part-time employees. I think we would have to, if we have to use fund balance, so be it. I think that whenever you put a project on the back of the employees, that's probably the wrong way to go. So, my motion is just for the, approve the project with funding out of fund balance.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Further discussion? I know, but I always look this way first, and I'm trying to make sure I don't ignore those people on my left.
Thank you.
Kiki?
I think that we all have a little bit of this, we are approving positions, which we aren't taking away the positions, but we're taking away the budget from them, and it leaves us going, are we understaffing, or are we, you know, not getting projects done, or are we, do we have positions we don't need, so therefore, we're just going back to this position, this, this well of money? So, I, I feel like I, I understand what you're thinking, but I'm not a fan of going to fund balance either, so, so, kind of along that line. And I only had one other comment, I'll make it quickly, and hopefully you can answer this one, is that this came about really quickly, and you had said this is vendors we typically deal with. Did this go through the public bid process, and did we skip right past that part?
Well, no, we, so, it's under the dollar value for the public bid.
Okay.
So, like Glenn mentioned, he went out and followed our public policy, it's under the dollar value, he got the three quotes within the timeframe, so we did, we did follow that correctly.
So, there's the pre-qualified vendors list, and that's got you.
Another comment?
Well, I, I second the motion, I'd like to comment on the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're most welcome.
I would like to say that this is not fund balance, this is cap fees, so, that's where the.
I thought Christie's message was.
She said fund balance in her comments, but it would come from cap fees, I'm correct with that.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
And so, and my point is, so we have four jobs potentially that could be filled by this, so there's four people working, and they're good paying jobs, but more importantly, we have hard-working people at the Water Department, who came off of a winter where we had frozen pipes, and we had the one guy, and I forget his name, but he was working, what, 48 hours straight fixing busted pipes. And I just don't want to see these guys working overtime to do this when we have the money. I know, we may have to, this may come back to bite me in a couple of years when we need to fund the rest of the projects. I hope not, but just for those guys to get all the work done and everything that needs to be done, let's just take it out of cap fees, that's my thought.
That's amended the motion, I agree to that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear Troy's thoughts on this.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, we bring you a balanced budget. The budget that the Water Department has brought forward is an opportunity to take advantage of a partnership and get that upsided. We found a way in which to fund it that would not have modified your budget that's been approved. We work on the budgets for hours, and I work these gentlemen.
Hour and a half or so, got there?
Got. So, you get to make the ultimate decision. We, we take cash as a precious commodity and have an opportunity to stay out of debt in the water fund, which we didn't think we would be able to do. So, thus the reason we said maybe we won't have the part-time staff, there's no one that would be unemployed at this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and just to clarify, this is a pause in hiring those four employees. It's not eliminating the positions permanently from your budget, it's just a pause in hiring until you recover the $85,000, whatever, total.
We just made a pause in this season's partners, and then we'd resume it next year.
And you're anticipating a struggle in filling those positions, or you're already encountering that?
We've had it open for a month now, and we haven't found any qualified employees.
Okay.
Just one more comment. No matter what we do up here, we're modifying the budget.
Okay, go for it. Now, I thought this was, would be done with 15 minutes ago.
I like to see employees.
Would you like to lengthen this discussion even further?
I'd like to talk about the Middle East for a bit.
Will the clerk take the rolls, please?
McEvers?
No.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Miller?
I'm tired.
Any, any.
I would go with.
Yes, on this one.
Motion carries.
Motion to blessedfully adjourn.
Second.
Before I take that motion, Water Department, a pet peeve, can you get somebody over to Ramsey, just north of Appleway, East Side, whoever owns, I think it's the crossings where all that.
Oh, yeah, where they water the street.
Brutal.
They flood the street. I go over there at 5:00 to go to the truck, and I just, it, it seems like it's this huge puddle of water every morning.
Are you talking about the southeast corner there?
Pardon?
Is that the southeast corner you're referring to, for that intersection?
It is the south, no, it's the northeast corner.
The block.
Of Apple, of Ramsey, just south of Apple, or just north of Appleway.
We'll, we'll do what we can. We encourage customers as much as we can.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay? Nobody wants, you, you finally really want to go home? Motion carries, we are adjourned.